Half a day, good morning, everyone. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today's December 21, and the time is about 8:34 a.m. In compliance with the open government law, notices for this public hearing were published in the Guam Daily Post and posted to the government of Guam Public Notice Portal on December 14th and December 19th. Notices were also sent by email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. This hearing is being livestreamed on the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. The oversight of the community health centers and the hearing on Bill Number 209-37 was originally scheduled for Thursday, December 14th at 2:00 p.m., but was moved to today, December 21, due to the governor calling the legislature into special session on December 14th at 1:00 p.m. The general rules of conduct for today are please identify yourself before you testify so that when we're transcribing the record, we are very clear who is speaking. In an effort to minimize distractions, we are asking that those present just please refrain from moving around while people are testifying so we can hear them clearly and to keep the doors quiet. Individuals who are submitting oral testimony are invited to submit written testimony as well so that your words are recorded correctly. After testifying, panelists are asked only to speak again if asked a question from one of the senators in the panel this morning or by invitation of the chair. After you have testified, we're going to go in certain rounds. We're going to begin with the council. We are going to invite the senators for any questions of that panel, and then that panel will be dismissed. All right, so we have two agenda items this morning. The first is the oversight of the community health centers and the status of services. The second is Bill Number 209-37. It's introduced by myself, Therese Chorlahe. It's an act to amend, sections 3803, 3813, and 3814, all of Chapter 3, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to updating the program, advisory council, and duties of the council concerning community health centers. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues who are here with me today, beginning with our minority leader, Senator Frank Blas, Senator Roy Canata, Senator Chris Barnett. Sisus Masi colleagues for being here this morning. So we'll begin with Agenda Item 1, which is the oversight. And I've called this oversight hearing to discuss SAR concerns as to whether the community health centers are meeting the needs of the community and, in particular, the people in the South who have been voicing their concerns with the lack of services available to them. And these concerns include how the hours of the health centers being closed versus being open and the regular provision of services in the past couple of years. Of course, I know during COVID, things were pretty much closed. But after that, the availability and hours of medical, specialty, pharmacy, and lab services at each location, the causes of the lack of services or shortfall in any services, staffing vacancies, which we have heard is also an issue for a while now, outreach and outreach to the community so that they know what's available, and the results of meeting with the community health center officials, which have happened recently and over the years, of course. These are federally funded programs, and they are being reviewed regularly by the grantors, and the state and strategic plan or any amendments being considered to that so we know the goals of the center and that we are all aligned as to what to expect and what will be accomplished and how we can help. So we know that there are two community health centers established by Public Law 24-248 for ensuring that health services, healthcare services to residents of Guam, both in the northern and southern regions, were met. They were served to equalize services at a faster pace and serve those that needed medical services closest to them. The first one was open in the south in 1984, and another was open in the north in 1998. We're here today to hear from public health regarding the services offered and as well as hear from the Community Health Center Advisory Council. According to the public health's website and the Bureau of Primary Care Services, which is the bureau in public health which oversees these community health centers. The administrator of the Bureau of Primary Care Services serves as the executive director of both of the northern and southern health centers, and the Board of Directors assumes the governance and fiduciary responsibilities of the community health centers. This is according to the website. "The mission of the bureau is to improve the health statute, status of the people of Guam and provide leadership in health information and surveillance, assurance of a healthful environment, and promotion of community partnerships." "The vision of the bureau is to improve the health of Guam's community by empowering patients to be responsible for their health and offering quality patient care." "The target populations for these health centers consist of low-income, uninsured, and medically underserved population. Specific groups within that target population include children 0 to 11 years old, including children with special healthcare needs, adolescents, including youths confined in a correctional facility, women of a childbearing age with health risk factors, pregnant women, including adolescents, the elderly 55 years and over, individuals staying in emergency or transitional shelters for the homeless, individuals living in substandard housing units, public health patients, i.e. patients with communicable infectious sexually transmitted and chronic diseases, federated states of Micronesia and martially citizens, and immigrants." This is the list again from the public health's website as to the bureau's target populations. According to the Health Center Uniform Data Systems, UDS, overview for Guam from 2018 to 2022, it gives a number of patients and the number of services in each field, and the number of medical patients seems to have decreased from 11,874 in 2018 to 8,698 in 2022. The number of dental patients, according to that, remains at zero for all those years. And some other services as well, such as mental health, it says zero. All right. So we've, of course, invited the advisory council, and I would ask you, the advisory councils, to please have a seat. The advisory council is led by Mayor, President of the council, and Mayor Melissa Savaris, Francis Solis, who is the vice president, Eileen Demian, who is the secretary, Annie Makepeace is the treasurer, Evelyn Armia, Mayor Anthony Chargeloff, Ronaldo Idrusa, Rony Espina, Mayor Alan Ngonta, Vicente Meno, Sonia Napati Sanchez, January Kentucky, the Department of Public Health and Social -- sorry. So if those members of the council could please come to the table and have a seat. Mayor Chargeloff, Mayor Ngonta. And I know that the advisory council has a meeting this morning as well, so we'd like to hear from them and get any questions for them answered. And before we hear from -- the Department of Public Health is also here. So if you could just raise your hand, we swore in some of you earlier. If you raise your hand, if you have not been sworn in. All right, thank you. Okay, so we will begin. Oh, sorry. Okay. So if we could have everyone in the room who's going to testify who's not been sworn in to please be sworn in right now with a sergeant of arms. And we will begin, Mayor Savaris, to hear from you. As President of the council. I had sent a list of topics that I described earlier to the Department of Public Health. They've sent a response, a preliminary response. I've distributed that to the senators who are present as well. All right, Mayor Savaris.
Good morning, Madam Speaker and members of this committee. I thank you for allowing us the opportunity today as a Guam Community Health Center Board. We did see the amendments that you had made with the Guam Community Health Center on GCA. So of course, it's very important with the change from advisory council to governing board. And other members have other statements as well, but we'd like to thank you for the opportunity. I know that you did come to join us for one of our meetings several months ago, and our regular meetings are every third Thursday at 10:00 in the morning unless otherwise change because of conflict of time. But we go between the north and the south, whatever is available. Now we're in conference rooms that are allowing us to use. Today, we will be at the Guam Election Conference Room at 10 o'clock today. But we meet regularly. We had a site visit in August. There were some findings, as per HERSA, you know, that we need to correct. We have been without a CEO, a chief executive officer, for several months now. We had one, finally hired one, and then she resigned after a few months. And so that's the challenges that we have because we do operate two health centers. And, you know, the staff, we have about 80 staff that work at both health centers from our providers all the way to our maintenance workers and everybody in between who all make a difference at the health centers. And our primary task is to provide primary health care to the underserved. And as you know, you know, for those that don't qualify for Medicaid, MIP, and, you know, assisted additional health care insurance, we also take private health insurances. But for those residents that don't qualify for either of the public assistance health insurances, we also have a sliding scale, a fee scale, where they can get discounts at the health center. We have laboratory services that will be in the north. We finally have the facility, the lab cleaned up and ready to start being used in the south. We have pharmacy. Pharmacy in the south has, for the last two, three Wednesdays, yesterday was the third Wednesday, that they are open every week. We had some problems with leaks in the pharmacy and then air conditioning problems, but those have all been repaired. And the -- so I spoke to our pharmacist, Michelle, and when we, as soon as we get a second pharmacist, that is in the process right now, we will be open a little bit more, a few more days in the south. But despite not being available in the south, when a southern patient has a prescription, the prescription goes to Michelle in the north, and they can pick up the actual scripts, the medication, the following day at the southern health center. So it's not like the patients have to drive to the northern health center or another pharmacy to get their medications. So the services continue to -- are provided at the health center for all residents. We've tried extended hours, but we noticed patients after 5:00 don't want to come into the clinic. We've been open on a Saturday, at least until 12 noon, but patients don't want to have their appointments on Saturdays. Very different from the northern clinic. Of course, we see more traffic, more volume of patients, but we have providers in both facilities. As a matter of fact, during the storm, the typhoon, the southern health center was open 24 hours. We do have a backup generator and a backup water tank. It was open for the patients who are on oxygen dependency, should the power go out. That facility was open so that those patients could go and, you know, take shelter there in case the power had gone out. So we bring it closer to home. So we're here to actually answer any questions that you have. I'd like to recognize our deputy director, Peter John Camacho. And we do have a co-applicant agreement that is pending the signature of the director and our CPO, Ms. Annette Agan. Thank you.
Sisus Masi. Maybe if everyone could introduce themselves for us to be sure, your role on the advisory council. So that's Mayor Savaris, the president.
Good morning. My name is Francis Solis. I am the vice president.
Sonia, I'm sorry, Sonia Napati Sanchez, I'm a board member.
Morning, manager. Alan Ngonta, board member.
Ray Idrusa, board member.
Good morning. Annette Agan, I'm the acting chief public health officer for the Department of Public Health.
Is that the head of the bureau?
Head of the Division of Public Health, ma'am.
Okay.
Within the department.
That's even higher than the bureau. Okay, thank you.
Manana sijus. They are Board of Directors. You have to have that thief where it would bite and hold it thoroughly. Don't let it go. That's what we need. And I thank you for doing that, Madam Speaker. Dankulu diu agradece because this Board of Directors are so faithful and loyal to the people of Guam, although they didn't really pay us. They only pay us for gas, but that's okay. And maybe in the future, maybe you can look into it and make that payment greater. So look at the GPA they're getting. Every time they go into a meeting, they get $1,000. Senators, you know that. Maybe our Board of Directors deserve better than what they're getting now. Maybe, maybe I would like to recommend that because what we do as a Board of Director, you cannot come to work, be a senator, if you're sick. They take care of you. So I'm going to cut my speech. We really appreciate their participation. Now, don't forget that this board is encompassed of different ethnic groups, and they're very active, and they're very supportive, and they're all awesome. Man mangis and man maulik. Manana sijus, sijus masi.
Sisus Masi.
Good morning, Anthony Chargeloff and Alahan, board member.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good morning, Madam Speaker. Peter John Camacho, Deputy Director, Department of Public Health and Social Services.
Sisus Masi, Deputy Director.
Madam Chair, can I?
Yes.
I just want to recognize who's not with us at the table, Eileen Demian, who's also a board member behind us. And then January Suzuki.
There's January.
That's also here.
Thank you for being here this morning, to all the board members and for your continuous work. I know they meet regularly. There are many issues that keep changing, so I really appreciate it. So the gist of the bill that we're going to have a public hearing on was based on, this is a federally funded program, and Mayor, maybe you can just confirm if what I'm saying is accurate. This is a completely federally funded community health centers. They were established by law, that's just to authorize where it's going to be placed in our government with Department of Public Health and Social Services. So, and we place it in the bureau under the chief public health officer. So, yeah, all of that, you know, they have an interplay. So I just want to confirm. So some of the things that we have heard, and Mr. Menno has been very good about keeping me earlier informed, and then I attended a meeting, and of course, we're following the news and the -- and we do get many calls, I have to say, you know. I think, I speak on behalf of all the senators as to the services, and we've also heard testimony as to what's available in the south in particular. And so if you could just confirm for us, it's called an advisory board, but really, this board is, I think, according to HERSA, which is the federal grantor agency, supposed to be a governing board. And so we're trying to make those changes to match, but it's also governed by an agreement. So there's laws that HERSA abides by. There's an agreement between HERSA and Public Health as to how they are going to manage these centers. There are statutes in Guam, and there are rules and regulations in Guam as to, all of these you have to abide by, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And so we're trying to make them all mesh together and make sure that we have enough authority, I guess, so that we don't violate the federal covenants so that we can maintain the money because it's a significant amount. And I looked at your bank account this morning, and yes, there's still a significant amount in there. So you're operating in the black. That's good, right? And the question is, are you able to provide the services that you think that the people of the south, for example, are entitled to in these community health centers? Are you able to provide all of those? Or are you being restricted by, I was told, personnel? You have a shortage of personnel, you know, and we are trying, we have, we've not had a CEO in place for the last seven years, I think, except for that one month that you referred to. That's seven years without a CEO. That's staff that you need. And so the pharmacies are not active down there, but you told us about your workaround, and that is you bring the medicine down the next day for them. So they can go back to the center and pick up medicine. And what about labs?
Labs, we're working on that. The only thing that we're waiting for now, the rooms are ready. The only thing that we're waiting for is the supplies and the position, the staff.
All right.
But what we've done, and I don't know if Dr. Bob is here, we've actually had, have the labs, lab techs from the north go down on Tuesdays and Thursdays to do blood draws in the north, in the south from, I'm not sure what the time is. 8:00 to 12:00. They do blood draws at 8:00, from 8:00 to 12:00 on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And then, so it's not that the services are not provided. Dr. Bob, our medical director, has actually instructed the lab techs to do that, and they've been doing that for several weeks now.
Okay, I'd like to recognize it. Dr. Robert Longararo, he is the medical director for the community health centers, both of them?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for being here this morning. I guess we will call you up in the next panel if you'd like. But is there any other council member who'd like to say anything before we ask questions?
So can I just elaborate a little bit? All of these board members have fiduciary responsibilities. All of them have attended Policies and Issues Board Boot Camp training with HERSA. We have the National Association of Community Health Centers, which is NAC. They've all gone to a NAC training, a NAC Policy and Issue Information Meeting, and that's part of our requirement. As you know, several years ago, our bank accounts have actually been separated from the government of Guam accounts. We have our own program income. All of our staff, including providers, all of our bills are paid using program income. The program income is the payment that we get from the, when we see patients. And then we also have HERSA grants that are also funded. We get no allotment from the legislature during the budget allotment. So we are really just operating on what we have on our program income and our federal grants. So, you know, we do have a request for addition of some funding for this upcoming fiscal year because we do have a shortfall. We want to get more providers in, but, you know, we try to entice the salaries. We can, because we are, our providers are paid under contract with the program income. They're all contractual services. We're able to pay them a little bit above step, and so it's a flexibility. Their pays, of course, are equivalent to all other community health centers around the nation, the U.S. We are 5% out of all the community centers, only 5% of the community centers in the U.S. are still tied in with the government in their states or territories, and we are one of the 5%. So, you know, we're trying, we have a committee from within our board that is actually looking at doing semi-autonomous. Our neighbors in the north at CNMI are actually severed. They are not tied in with their government. They are operating CAGMEN Community Health Centers, which is a nonprofit organization. And so they now have two clinics and have recently opened a third clinic in Tinian. We're able to hire providers who are on the National Health Service Corps. So provider, doctors who are, finished their intern and have student loans are able to come to work under the community health centers here on Guam because we are considered an underserved health center. And for every year that they work here with us, one-fourth of their student loan is forgiven. So we've, the last time that we had a provider on the National Health Service Corps So we've, the last time that we had a provider on the National Health Service Corps was Dr., Dr., several years ago, over eight years ago, where he was able to come with his family, but after he was done, unfortunately, he went back to the East Coast.
All right. So you, so HERSA money plus patient money, meaning Medicaid or Medicare?
And regular insurance.
And regular insurance.
And then the self-pay.
And self-pay.
Right.
Okay, and so, and the only government of Guam money I know that we provide is for the stipends for the board members, which Mr. Menno is correct, they're very low.
Actually, only two board members fall in the, there's a public law that...
Oh, because you're all got public offices already, I see.
Two board members would have, several of us have over ten years of service at the board, but only two board members who are not public service are able to get that two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar stipend. The rest of us are just on gas coupons for attending a meeting, but that's great too, because gas is high.
Well, thank you very much. It is a voluntary board, and I'm very appreciative of your work. All right, so, can you talk to me about the vacancies then? Like, what is your, I know, so the CEOs want, the physicians, of course, so you're, you're describing salary is an issue. Are you, as a board, able to set the salaries?
We, what we do is we still follow the Department of Administration, and there are cases where we want to entice a little bit and do an above-step recruitment. And so, of course, all our contracts still go through the normal gov-Guam procedure with going through the director's office, through BBMR and finance to make sure that our funding is there, and then as well as the Attorney General's Office, and then the governor's office. So we go through the whole process as well, just like any other contract we'll do, we do try to do, especially with our providers, an above-step recruitment.
Right, so above-step recruitment's already allowed by law, and contracts, of course, allowed by law, but the renewals, I'm told, are taking long, like, there's a gap in between renewals, so you lose services for...
So what we try to do is, we know our staff is really good of the business office, as soon as they know that somebody's going to be, need renewal in six months, their contract is going to be expiring. They're already preparing the documents and already negotiating with the providers.
All right, I hope that's correct, yes. So you're, you're saying there's no more gap, that you're able to address that gap by acting in advance?
Yeah, what we've done is, we have contacts at different places, Attorney General is one, and when we have documents that go from the director's office to the AG's office, we're already making contact with them, that our document is there. Can you please follow up, you know, or give us at least maybe a week, and then we'll update you if it hasn't been out.
All right. If, and are you going to be able to hire a CEO?
The CEO process, we did actually hire one that was supposed to start on December 11th. However, we were informed, the director's office was informed on December 8, 13th, that she rescinded. I thought on the 11th that she was processing, and when I asked the staff, they said no, and then it was the Deputy Director that actually informed me that the individual rescinded her acceptance. So we're in the process. There were two individuals that rated high, and so I asked the Deputy Director to proceed and notify the second, the second selection, and he was going to check with HR, and we were still within the time limit.
All right, so would you describe this CEO as being hired by the board or hired by the Director of Public Health?
Because they still go through the government process, I sit on as a board representative on the panel, and then we make the recommendation as a panel. Dr. Bob is also one of the panelists for the interview, and so we do our rating, and then when we do the selection, it's presented to the board.
Madam Chair, I apologize for my interruption. Madam Chair, Speaker, and the Director of Public Health, this is something that we desperately, desperately need, the CEO. So we just, you know, para u alekla todo, prepare everything that this board do. And somehow, na, don't blame the board, don't blame Public Health. I think the biggest problem on this concern is, we need to jack up the price tag. Somehow, every time we hire, somebody look at it, they say yes, and then they back off. So, Madam Chair, members of the Senator, I really, we desperately need that position. You know, I, I hate to tell you this, the government is by the people and it's for the people. Now, the problem is, every time somebody look at the application and they sign for it, they back up. Which was the problem? I think, I think, I'm only assuming, is the pay scale. So, while I'm on this phone, Madam Speaker, pardon me, Board Chair, we also need an attorney. My good mayor here recommends that, and I supported that. We need an attorney for this board in case of making such decisions that are, you know, sometimes detrimental, maulik, but blah, blah, we need some protection. Please, understand where I'm coming from, Madam Chair, sidu masi.
Sidu masi.
Madam Chair, we do follow the, the rates on the Department of Administration scale, and so we've actually done an above-step recruitment for our last CEO. So that's, you know, we have to follow the scale, we are still government, and then we're, we're still a line agency within the government of Guam.
Yes, however, if you think the rates are not matching the position, you can have that position evaluated again and lined up, right? Especially if you're saying that we're not meeting, or we're below national standard, or we have special needs out here that we need to raise that up. I mean, so there are processes within, notwithstanding being a line agency, that can happen to raise a salary for a CEO and the providers. However, do you feel you have the authority to raise the salaries?
Yes, once we, and we always, one of the concerns is, once we approve and they accept, you know, after your six-month probation, that, that will be visited, and then we can make the pay adjustment after that.
Okay, so this is within the board's purview?
Yes.
Because the way I read the statute, the board has ultimate purview, and you're right, when you hire, Mr. Menno, when you hire the CEO, they are in charge of everything, they make almost all the decisions as to what services are going to be provided, when, everything. So, to not have one for seven years, I feel like is such a detriment to us. So, I don't know, I hope that that is going to be quicker, but I want to ask the rest of the board members, since you are here, do you feel like you have that authority? Is this within your authority? Has it been your understanding that that is your authority to hire the staff at these, well, to hire the CEO who then dictates everything else? What services will be provided? Of course, with the advice of the board and the authority, but, but the board approves the CEO. Do you believe you have that authority, Mayor?
Madam Chair, when I came into this board with the notion of the prior CEO, it, it was justified, the work that was entailed and the duties that were, had to be carried on. So, I echo the sentiments of Madam Chair and Mr. Menno, that it is prudent and it is urgent that we do get that position filled.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, so, funding your good, you might need more, you're saying, because you want to hire above what has been budgeted for providers, meaning doctors and nurses?
It's also, also other staff, we need to be, we need also our eligibility specialist. We are a few months behind, five months, I believe, behind on billing. I know we are working on a overtime plan that we're going to be submitting to the director's office for review, so that we can, you know...
Oh, no. Catch up on billing?
Right.
All right, so...
But Speaker, you know, I just want to say that even our rates, several years ago, when we did the, our...
Fee schedule.
Fee schedules. Our fee schedule, every, we were compatible to, to Medicare rates, and every year, January, one January of every year, our rates go up five percent, so that we're not coming back every two to three years asking for an increase. So it automatically is an increase, but I was even told by staff that even that five percent is not really going to make, it's an, an increase, but not much of a debt to, to make a difference, but at least we're continuing to increase.
All right, well, is the community able to pay that? I mean, these community health centers are run by community members, there's a different goal here, right? That's to make sure we get access to them. So do you believe you are doing everything in your power to get access to the people? Let's say the Southern Health Center, the people in the South.
Yes, I feel that we have offered, as a matter of fact, we being the Mayor's Council representatives, both all Mayor Tony Charaglove, myself, and Mayor Allen, during our Mayor's Council meetings, we've actually, I've actually asked the Mayor's Council, because the health center team is ready to go out into the community, but we want to know where the needs of the mayors are at, they know their villages, and I've asked all the mayors at these meetings, where do you want an outreach at? Of course, Mayor Inalahan's not going to ask for it to be at the health center, we've actually done in-reach. In-reach where, and we partnered with other agencies and organizations, we did one on December 2nd at the Inalahan Health Center, we did an in-reach at the Dennyno Public Health for vaccines and immunizations and, you know, just well-baby checks and families that came in to, to do that. But I've asked the mayors, where do you want, if you, if Agat wants it in Pagacza, or Melissa wants it at Hemlani, they just got to let us know, and we could do those out. All we, Mayor Tony will do is let the health center know that he, Inalahan wants, I mean, the Hubata Mayor wants it at his office, where his people can walk there, we will schedule it, but the mayors never respond to that.
Okay, so outreach is available, you are relying on the mayors to direct you in that regard, or you partner with other agencies who are also doing outreach?
Yes.
All right, so we're trying to get the word out to the community that you are open, you're ready, and you're able to service them. You're able to service people who have chronic disease, meaning that's a longstanding disease that they have to maintain, such as diabetes?
Yes.
Right, heart disease? You're also able to handle, and I know you had special rooms in each of these centers built for urgent care?
Yeah.
Right, do you have staff?
The urgent care facility would be acted as a walk-in.
Right.
You know, they don't have appointments, so they'll come in as a walk-in?
All right.
And they will be seen.
All right, and what if some...
We have providers.
Sorry, okay.
And so I, I'm going to admit, we need a better marketing system, right? And I think that's to market our products.
Marketing?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought, okay, I thought you said parking.
Oh, no, no.
Okay, marketing, yes, okay, yes. So that's what we're trying to help you with here today. So, the community should know these centers are available, and they are supposed to provide many services, including specialty services, especially prenatal care, right? And how is the prenatal care? Would you say it's where it's supposed to be?
Well, we have two doctors that do see patients, you know, and the services are there, so we have a family practice doctor that if, if we don't have the, anyone there, we usually, we have a nurse midwife that also can see patients for prenatal care.
Do you need more?
Definitely.
My understanding is we need more.
Yes, we do.
All right, so are you working on that?
Well, recruitment is tough, you know, everybody's trying to pull, right? From the different, from the same pod.
Who is job is it to, to solicit, I mean, recruit?
I think it's everybody's job, but really...
But who's focus, who's focusing on that? Who, is it the board, a team, like a staff?
The nurses, the staff. We have the staff at the health center, and if we had a CEO, that's something that the CEO would also work with.
Yes, that's why we need someone to focus.
Let me tell you, Senator, last year, after the graduates from, the nursing graduates from, from UOG, everybody was enticing them with lunches and breakfasts and dinners, we actually did a lunch, you know, and tried to help, you know, entice them, come to us, you won't work midnight, you know, the graveyard shift, but you will take care of the underserved, which is really rewarding, because, you know, you see the patients, the families that really, you can make a difference for.
Do you have an internship program where they can get training?
We are working with something on that.
All right. I think that helps them to be familiar with your environment and then want to work there after graduation.
And then we also have providers that have private practice, and they come to us to do part-time.
All right.
And so, you know, we can see school kids that need their physicals and after hours, they don't have to get out of school early in the day because a pediatrician's not going to be there. They could even come on a Saturday in the North, they could come to the South anytime.
All right, what if someone comes in, they're sick, and they need hospital care? What happens?
Okay, we will have provider, we have providers at the health centers, and they will be treated as a walk-in, they will do the, see the patient, and then should they be needed, they should they need to be, you know, taken by ambulance, there's a room there. We have two bays in the, in the South, where they could, you know, keep them there until, you know, they're stable, and then call the ambulance across the street from the health center to transport them.
All right, have there been any issues, Dr. Leon Guerero, with ambulances not responding? I'm sorry, can I invite you up here? I can't hear.
I, we see urgent, not necessarily, we don't have an urgent care clinic, but we have what we call a sick clinic. We do see patients there, and we try to see if we can do it just at the clinic site, but if they do need admissions, then we make arrangements, and we usually have a good response time from GFD to come and pick up the patients. We also provide, I also, if I, if it's a patient of mine, I would also call ER and tell them that we're sending a patient, so that they know ahead of time what to expect. So, we don't necessarily have an urgent care, because we just don't have some of the stuff that real urgent cares have, like x-ray facilities, we, we used to be able to do x-rays, we don't anymore, we just don't have the techs, we don't have the, we do still have machinery that can do it, but, yeah, so we do have, like I said, a sick clinic, and we, the response time from GFD is a lot better, because they have more equipment to respond to. I think I've seen more problems when, because I also do hospital work, I see more problems transferring patients from GRMC to GMH, even though we talk to them at seven o'clock in the evening, the patients don't usually arrive till about two or three in the morning. So I think there is more problems with transferring patients from the hospitals to hospitals than from the clinics.
All right, so you're getting response from GFD?
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate that, and you're coordinating, that's good. Okay, this procurement, I understand, these centers, if you read the, read the statutes and what all they have done, and if you read some of the other reports, they have been equipped in the past with many things, x-ray, fetal monitors, things to take care, urgent care facilities, but sometimes it's the personnel, like the techs that doctors said, or it's the equip, I mean, the supplies that you need to run these equipment? Who is in charge of procurement? Is that something the board, I guess the CEO's supposed to do, this is another thing, the CEO's not there, they can't concentrate on this, so you are looking to Public Health to do this?
We have staff that are... We have staff that are here. Uh, as a matter of fact, they're here. Uh, they take care, we have a business office at the health centers. And the staff are, uh, do the requisitions. They do all of the RFPs.
So does the board tell them, "Yes, order that" or "No, don't order that"? What is the limitation? Because you have funds. So is the board controlling what we're spending the funds on?
Well, we mon, we monitor what they do, uh, then, but, you know, with, they know what, we don't micromanage. Uh, we, they, we let them run the...
All right. But when we are told that we can't do this service because we don't have this supply or this person, that becomes a community problem, right? Like that we don't have, uh, glucose tests or whatever. You know what I mean? We need to have whatever the doctors and the nurses need down there. So, uh, I just, you're making it sound like you do have everything, but that's not what I have heard. Yes. So I'm asking, who's concentrating on getting those things that you don't have?
So I'm a neophyte to this, the government of Guam procurement. I just got, um, hired officially this year. And so I'm, uh, now I'm starting to understand some of the processes that go occur. And it's, um, mind-boggling and some of the, the roadblocks that we have to face. Um, fiscal year starts in October, but we're not, we're told we're not supposed to touch any of the funds until the end of November. Uh, and then when we do, we have a lot of, uh, supplies that need to be, uh, replenished. Um, we send it and, you know, DOA and GS, GSA, GAS, I, they, they all ha, are, they're doing a good job with the, but they're very limited in the number of people that are allowed to work, to, to do these contracts. So the contract sometimes sits at GSA for extended periods of time. So we don't have the, the supplies that we necessarily need. Um, the example is the lab. The lab is, uh, we, we have machineries that are, uh, all put up in the north because we don't have, uh, supplies down south for that. Uh, and so the contracts, we, we, I mean, we keep calling GSA, DOA, I'm, I'm not too sure which one does what. But they're, and again, they're doing a, a good job as they can with, with the limited amount of people that they have. I think they need more people to be able to process these, uh, the, uh, the things that we need. Uh, it's, so it sits there and we wait. And the, and the other problem is that if, if Department of Public Health is a big, uh, uh, agency, if, like I say, social service has a bill outstanding, it doesn't matter that the clinic is federally funded. It doesn't matter that we have the funds. The, the supplier won't supply us until all the bills are paid. So we, we're also behind on that.
All right. And I appreciate your, uh, frankness with us, Doctor. This is what I have heard as well. So, um, it's very concerning that you're being told that the reason is DOA doesn't have personnel. I say, you have to make sure that somebody, and I'm going to ask you, Deputy Director, who is advocating for, for these community health centers to get what they need when they need it? We know the system. We know the October deadlines. We know how to work the system so that we can get our supplies in advance. We know how to tell them this is the priority. And so are you saying you, you have been advocating and they are just completely denying that the community health centers are priority over some of these other agencies procurement? Or, or what efforts are you making to make sure that these? We cannot not have supplies at the community health centers. It's a disaster like the hospital if we're going to do that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Um, just recently I got more involved with the, um, not necessarily the procurement process, but more the payment process. Um, GSA, part of DOA, does do the processing for those requisitions and converting them to purchase orders. Um, but then DOA has the accounting part that will take care of paying for the invoices. And as, um, was pointed out, if invoices, we, our, our federal programs especially are able to participate in the 340B drug discount pricing program. And for HERSA and for CDC, that's actually a, a requirement that we need to do that. We need to purchase through that particular program. And so we do. The problem that we've encountered is that we have maybe five programs that might be ordering from this particular vendor who is a contracted provider for HERSA, uh, for that program. And if we have any invoices that are over 15 days, then they will just stop processing orders. So that means if the TB program is caught up, but then let's say there's one invoice from this, uh, community health centers that is 15 days or over, everybody else gets stopped.
What is the solution to that?
Well...
I don't blame them.
One of the things that we've done, or that I've done, is reached out to Mr., uh, Director Byrne and explained the situation to him. And, um, there's some concern about the, uh, contract because I believe the original contract, um, was entered into in 2017. And then in 2020 was, it expired. However, there was a provision in the contract that says, "After the expiration of this agreement, you can do month-to-month." And so, I mean, that's, I, for me, that's an allowance that you can continue to order. Um, Director Byrne's, you know, in his discussion was saying that we might want to renew the, the, and we can. We, we just need to, you tell us what you want us to do so that we can, you know, comply so that we can not have, um, situations where medications for this program are, are stuck and the other programs are, you know, also not able to order. So it's an issue of making the payments to, and we're paying for these supplies that we're, we're talking about with federal dollars. So, you know, it's, and I, I've been following up with Mr., with Mr. Byrne. And so, um, I, the last I checked, there weren't any outstanding invoices for our 340B vendor. But that needs to be done consistently.
All right. Well, that's good news. So I hope you update your contract. Yeah, I, I kind of agree with him. Can't be going on a 2017 contract. You've got to make sure, or 2014. Make sure, it's got to be the priority. And I'm, the reason why I'm harping on this is because of what we saw with GMH. They came in and told us, just like you are saying, "Oh, we're up to date", but we have people who are actually working there saying, "We don't have the supplies we need." So there's a disconnect there. We need the supplies. And you, you need, you are the department right now with, uh, you know, that's the structure. You have to advocate for them. And we can't wait around while DOA tells us, "Oh, um, you know, we're, we're short on staff." That cannot be an acceptable answer to public health.
Madam Speaker, if I may interject with all due respect, I am sorry that I come in and intercept. We were told the community health center is not public health. I don't know whether you are aware of that.
By who? But for what purpose?
This is the federal government.
Mm-hmm.
That's why I'm, I'm, I'm confused in what you have in your program because you mentioned the entire, the Department of Public Health and Social Services. But we were told by the federal government, me, that we are not public health. So I am confused. I want to make that clear. What did, what are we? We are community health center, yes. And I'm not degrading public health. I think we have to work together. We have to hold hands. So I'm asking you as the chair, are we really part of public health? Because what I learned is that we're not public health. We are community health center for the people of Guam. So which is which?
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, that's what our bill that we're going to have a hearing on this morning is also supposed to clarify. Because you are supposed to be set up as an individual, independent entity that is in contract with public health, right? So public health is supposed to assist. And this is what the government of Guam has decided in the past, that they will assist by being the lead on, you know, the procurement goes through them. They handle some of these admin things that, uh, so the community health centers can handle community health. However, it's up to you as an entity, you, the council, who is in contract with public health, to ensure that that's what's going to work, right? And, um, that it's working. So when you can't get the supplies you need, for me, that's not working. And that in pu, public health, because you're being bound by all of the other, um, debt or, you know, by pu, of public health, that it's an impediment as opposed to a benefit to be linked that way. So I can understand, Mayor, when you talk about being autonomous, at first I thought, "Why do you need that? Why do you want that? You're, you've got your money and you should control your money." There's one more question I want to ask you. Is it true that some of the money was taken from this community health center fund by the government of Guam and used for some other purpose? Is that correct? Does anyone know the history on that? Mayor Savar, do you know that?
I'm sorry.
I was told millions of dollars, $2 to $8 million have been removed from the accounts without the permission of the board or the bureau.
Ray Adrosa, board member. Um, it has happened in the past wherein funds from our, uh, program income had been used by the local government to, uh, pay off some of their debts. And, uh, because we are still part of the line agencies now, I believe the director of administration has the power to shift, or I believe it's the governor, I, I'm not too sure. But they can move funds around. And that's what we were told, as long as they can, uh, replenish or pay us back in a certain amount of days. So we actually sat with the director at one point and told him, "At least let us know before you move funds", you know, because the board actually found out after the fact that funds were moved from our accounts to help out the local government. We're one government. There's no reason why we cannot help. But we have responsibilities and it would be prudent to at least let us know what, you know, they're doing. And I think that, uh, we've sort of resolved that with, uh, the director. But the fact that this can happen and they were citing a law, I don't know the law. I cannot cite that law at the moment. But they are saying that there is a law which allows Department of Administration to transfer funds.
That's funny. We also have laws saying that special accounts should not be touched, should not be transferred, right? However, yeah, we've seemed to have to go back in by law and say specifically, "This special account should not be touched." And it's just so obvious if you're supposed to use your program income to be self-sustaining. And, and it's such a beautiful program in theory. It just really needs attention, I think, and, and advocacy to get things flowing the way they're supposed to be, get yourselves prioritized within DOA, GSA, or whatever. Otherwise, we find another solution. I'm going to open it up to my colleague, Senator Bloss. Any questions for the panel?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And, uh, thank you to the board for being, I was very informative. Um, and I'm very much interested in, first off, I guess, the dilemma and the concern about bringing on a CEO. Um, I guess, well, can you share as to the last time you had higher CEO and then they just, uh, quit? What was the reason as to why they departed? Was it, was it a salary? Was it...
Uh, I'll go ahead. I was, I was here when she, uh, it wasn't for personal reasons that she resigned.
Okay, okay. Because, you know, I appreciate that there, you want them to assume a number of different responsibilities, but then what I'm hearing about a lot of the problems, I don't know whether I want to take that position myself. Okay? You know, and then recognizing, I, you know, I, I see, you know, the personalities and everything in the board, which is a good, good thing for the board. But if I'm going to be put into a position where I'm going to already, I'm already handcuffed inside because I can't get the supplies that I need, I'm short on staff or, you know, the, the personnel, I've got mandates that I've, that I've got to follow, doesn't, it's not going to make for a very good performance evaluation if none of these things are taken care of. So I, I, I can, I, I understand that. And so, um, I appreciate, and granted that there's going to be a hearing on the bill, but I think that, uh, you're right. The bill will help you to, to address some, some of the concerns. Madam Mayor?
Yes. And, you know, I just want to say, uh, you know, you're here, the board's here. The team, the 80 people that are at the health centers, they are, they work really, really hard. They, they do what they can for the patients, from the providers to the, because the maintenance workers, the medical records, and continuity of care. We have a, uh, medical records person that gets, has personal contact with GMH and GRMC for patients who are uninsured or don't have primary providers. And we, they make those appointments for continuity of care before the patient is released from the hospital. She's already getting all the information that our providers need so that the patient can be seen in our clinics, whether it be the Southern or Health Center. And because we are concerned, we don't want those patients that come out of the hospitals to end up in the hospital again. We want to make sure that they're seeing a provider and then, you know, they're staying out and may, their maintenance is done through the health centers. So our health center staff, they all work equally hard, just as hard as everybody else. And there's only 80, less than 80 of them. But with, with or without a CEO, they're making sure that patients are being seen, immunizations, everybody, even the prenatal, you know, we have the, like I said, we may not have an OB-GYN, but we do have a nurse midwife, you know, and they're seeing the patients.
So in the absence of your, you, so you don't have a CEO right now?
No, we don't.
So in the absence of your CEO, who is, who's in charge?
Uh, Senator, may I apologize for intercepting? Let me clear some of those questions you have. Madam Chair, please. We hired a CEO before. We were very elated, very happy. She accepted the job. However, the director of public health fired her with all the board's knowledge. I'm not telling, I'm just saying things the way I see it. The board knows this. We accepted, we are very happy when she accepted the position, but she was fired. And that's why we don't have a CEO up to this time. So I want to intercept and I apologize for interrupting, but you got to know this. And Madam Chair, I, I really appreciate that we all come together and...
I'm sorry, but the other board members are going to leave, uh, for our 10 o'clock, their, our 10 o'clock meeting. So if they could be excused? Thank you.
Is there anything else that you'd like to add before you leave?
Ray and I will stay.
All right. Is there anything else you'd like to add before you leave? Thank you. Sisus Masi. Mr. Meno, sisus masi.
Thank you for your time, madam. Merry Christmas.
Yeah, the one thing I want to say is that, so I'm, I guess I'm the newest board member to this body. But in my observation, I realized that it looked like we were clearly an advisory board. I was, I, I actually brought up the idea of seeking an opportunity to go semi-autonomous to actually full autonomy. And I believe you can hear that resonating amongst everybody here speaking, that it appears like we need to be an autonomous organization so that we can be fully functional and reach our, uh, potential for efficiency. So with that said, I want to kind of, uh, leave that food for thought because that's kind of like the direction we feel like we need to be going. And, uh, until we get to that point, we're going to be having the same struggles that, that we're experiencing. And so until we get... And so until we get self-autonomy, we're never going to really have true governance of what we want to accomplish. And so, yes, the people's, the healthcare of the community is at stake here. We don't kind of get to that expedient process of getting to that point. But ultimately, again, like you've heard, whether it be the doctor, the board members, the chair, they're all kind of resonating the same position is that until we get to that point of being full autonomy, we're never going to get to where we want to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, thank you to the council for their presence here today. Sisus Massey.
Madam Chair, if we may ask, some of the members that have to also take video of our meeting and, may they be excused as well?
Sure, of course.
Thank you.
Yes, sorry. Senator Blas.
Thank you. You know, it's kind of interesting, I'm sitting here and I'm watching the different reactions. And I, you know, and I agree that, well, first off, in reading the statute, there should be an autonomy to this thing, okay? Because, you know, I kind of wonder here, how does, your agreement is between your body, okay, the Guam Community Health Center, Board of Directors, and the Department of Public Health. In an agreement, it does not say that public health is going to take over and is going to... So I beg to need clarity on a previous remark. And maybe what we can do is give us time, give you time to be able to formulate that, not necessarily today so that we understand the full breadth of it. I don't want to put you in a position, you know, Madam Mayor, in this thing, but I think that there needs to be some clarity. I don't know whether, and I want for the sake of my other colleagues to, is delve into that sometime later on as we look into, you know, it could be perceived one way, but there's always two sides to the coin. And I want to give you that opportunity to be able to, you know, all right? So, but then another thing that is your ability to be able to hire and create positions within the health center spectrum?
Not necessarily create. We already have, you know, we know what positions we need as a health center. And like I'll explain, we wanted, years ago, we wanted to, as part of HERSA's requirement was to have a chief executive officer, a medical director, and a general accounting supervisor. However, as part of the Department of the line agencies, we cannot have the general accounting supervisor. So, because only Department of Administration can hold that position. So what we had to do was come up with an MOA between the community health center and the Department of Administration so that we have the general accounting supervisor that is hired by the Department of Administration but paid by the community health center. And so that position, that person who holds that position will be assigned at the health centers. So we have, for positions that we cannot hold, we will have an MOA between the agency that is authorized by government statutes and our health centers.
Well, because I'm looking at the statute that basically, you know, brought you guys on board, and I really don't see any restriction. Or it's, for me, it's very unclear here. It's very ambiguous as to whether or not you need Department of Public Health Services approval, you know? So is this a point where it needs to be clarified?
Well, one of the things, as a co-applicant's agreement, like I said, that was one of the things that we were kind of cited on, with not having an updated co- applicant's agreement in August when HERSA was here. And so we've been working with the director's office on getting that, and we negotiated and made some changes. And like I said, it's been at the director's, on the director's desk for several months now, waiting for signature.
Okay. Is there anything in your agreements with HERSA? This is a HERSA program, right?
The co- applicant's agreement is between the community health centers and the Department of Public Health.
Okay, so who is the federal entity? Who's the grantor?
HERSA is our Health Resource Services Administration, who is our grantor.
Okay. Is there anything in, whether it be the co- applicant agreement or an agreement with HERSA for the program, that restricts you from establishing private-public partnerships to be able to assist in the community health needs?
No, we don't, we're not, there's no restrictions for private partner, public partnership.
Okay. Because as I hear that there may be lacking, I'm just thinking of ways to be able to, I guess, open the door and make, give clarity to, you know, to the health center board of being able to establish and look into different ways to be able to provide the services.
Yes. As a matter of fact, like I said, when we do outreachers or in-reaches, we have organizations, nonprofit organizations, recently even DOE came out, you know, so we were a one-stop facility at the south on December 2nd with all many types of organizations that were providing services to the southern community. So the families came in, they got their vaccines, immunizations, they saw a provider, they registered for a program at the school, Head Start was there, you know, so it was multi-agencies that all did an in-reach together. Another thing is some of our part-time providers, actually, like I mentioned earlier, have private practice and then they come, they want to help us, so they come and do part-time with us.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it and thank you very much. And then we'll have a further discussion so we can provide some clarity into another issue. And I didn't want to put you in a position right now, okay, because I think this is very positive moving forward, okay, and finding solutions. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Caneta.
Good morning. Thank you guys for being here today. Good morning to Mayor Savaros. In your opinion, the marketing manager, do you guys have a marketing manager?
Not, no, we don't. And we don't have that position.
Okay. Do you have any marketing contract?
No, we don't.
Okay. Do you, do you think that a marketing contract, what would you feel would be better, best fit for you guys' operation? Your services are definitely a need in the community, so would you feel that a marketing manager should be acquired for you guys, or do you feel that a marketing contract would be more...
Well, first, what I, we were telling everyone is, be badadosu. Tell them what we're doing down in the south, right? Because if, I mean, we're just, no, we're not keeping it to ourselves, but, you know, go out and spread the word. But, you know, we need to find first, if we, because we do, we will have a shortfall in this fiscal year, so we need to find out if we have funding. I even told them, I said, right now, we're using Facebook to record our meetings. I said, post all these things on Facebook because social media works, right? And so we'll start with that and then see how more patients come in. Of course, we need more encounters. Like you heard the speaker say earlier, we, in 2017 or 18, we only, we served 8,000 or 10,000 patients. And then in 2020, '22, we're only serving 8,000. So we've dropped in serve in the number of encounters, right? But it could have been, you know, contributing to different things, people moving away, finding other providers, right? Or just not coming to the clinics. So, you know, it's, we'll find ways, we'll try social media and then see what our funding source is like. And then if we could, then we'll hire a marketing.
Okay. Thank you so much. So I heard from Dr. Lianggrao that the X-ray machine or equipment is available, there's just no tech available? Turn on your mic, sir.
Sorry. There are some X-ray machines down in the south, but we can't use it because we need a specific room. We need to have its ledge shielded, we need to have a certain height, and none of the facilities at CHC match those requirements. We used to be able to do it up at Mingelaw facility because there was a specific room where the was lead lined and the height of the ceiling was appropriate for that. But as you know, we're not using that because supposedly a fire or something, but I'm not too sure. I think if we're going to have to do X-ray and things like that, we're going to have to probably remodel the CHCs because they, they're, again, there's certain federal requirements to do things like that.
Okay. Thank you for that information. Certainly, X-rays are very costly. I think if we have a machine, then I think the investment for such lead facility will be need to be harder, especially if it's federally funded engagement. Deputy Director, thank you, Mr. Lianggrao.
Can I just add something really quick? We know we have limitations on how we hire, and so we've kind of did a roundabout way where we have an M U O with GMH, and that's how we were able to hire an obstetrician from the Navy. The contract was with GMH, but supplied services to Department of Public Health, so we have an M U O. So we're doing things knowing with our limitations and how we can hire, because it does take a while for contracts to go through. We are doing things to try to work around that. So I just wanted to mention that we do things that are able to bypass some of the things that hinder us. The other problem, though, with like with OB, and it's a big problem, not only for the island of Guam, but for the whole US, there's a limited amount of obstetricians that are willing to continue practice because of the liability that they have to face. And so we're trying to hire where other jurisdictions are also trying to hire. So it's not just Guam per se that has this problem, it's the whole US. So we have to work around that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lianggrao. Deputy Director, what is the standard turnaround time for vendor payment?
Quite honestly, sir, I don't know what that standard would be because we don't cut our own checks.
Okay.
If, like a GMH, you could probably ask that question and you get a good answer, but the check writing is not within our jurisdiction.
Noted. Well, when you guys get an invoice, right, what is your general post time for payment? Do you have a ballpark? Can anyone answer that?
Senator, I'm sorry, I can't give you an exact time, but being a line agency, when we receive the invoices, we have to route it through our department down to DOA for processing. So in regards to the 340B program that was being talked about earlier, they are one of the most restrictive vendors in that in 15 days, they will lock us out as a department in whole. So what we do within the community health centers, as well as my bureau, the Bureau of Community Disease Control, which has the Ryan White program, the TB immunization, SDHIV, but for the medications we purchase, the two bureaus talk to each other and say, you know, do you have invoice? We're going to contact down at DOA Division of Accounting. We give them the invoice numbers and say, we need these paid as soon as possible. We're about to hit that 15-day threshold, but it's something that we have to constantly do because both the community health centers and my bureau are constantly churning out these requisitions when the account, the books are opened for the new fiscal year. So it's something that our deputy here has been trying to do a direct communication with Director Burns to say, can this, these two accounts, anytime you see 340B, Amerisource Virgin is the vendor, to pay it right away so that we don't have to always email one-to-one saying, I got these invoices, now CHC has this invoice. So that's something we're hoping to streamline, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. That's what I was wondering is, if you guys get the invoice, do you guys just post, do you guys advise the management team to get it posted immediately, you know, so that we're not waiting, it's not sitting, right? It's very imperative that we have those things functioning, and I'm not questioning your management. I'm just, I just wanted to clarify, if you guys have a stockpile for any of the...
So not for 340B. They're different from other vendors and whatever we procure through the purchase order, we cannot just draw down as we need it. They will deliver everything upfront. So we do not want to waste vaccines by, I mean, medications, I'm sorry, by sitting on the shelf and we don't need them. So staff at the community health centers, as well as in my bureau, we try to order monthly or quarterly, depending on the burn rate for these various medications and the quantity needed. And again, it's also based on allotments being released by DOA. My bureau, the medication can be locally funded. For Ryan White SDHIV, it's federally funded. So it depends on release of allotment as well. For the CHCs too, they do their, recently, there was one morning, they gave me 27 requisitions for needed medication and supply. But again, it goes through the whole process of going to GSA. And as Dr. Lianggrao mentioned, they need assistance down there to help process these requisitions into purchase orders.
Senator, if I may add, we also have one of our staff who is very familiar with the GSA process, and so she is our go-to person, you know, and she can help pull something out to get their attention as well. So we're trying to work around the system as best we can.
Okay. Thank you so much. Merry Christmas to each and every one of you. Thank you guys for your public service.
Okay. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Sisus Massey, Senator. Senator Burnett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning and Merry Christmas. Thank you for being with us this morning. Can I just start with Mr. Adrosa? Are you able to add any more information about the rating of your funds?
I'm not a very good public speaker.
It's okay.
But I am a retiree of the Department of Administration, Division of Accounts, Department of Administration.
So you have intimate knowledge about how this stuff works?
I have worked with federal grants and back when I was working, I was approached by several, several agencies, whatever, to become a board member. And I've always said no because I see how a lot of the programs are being run, working with federal grants. But the CHC was different. And I was really, you know, at that time. Because the CHC, to my knowledge, and this is when I was working, is only one, the only government agency I know that receives federal funds and doesn't return any money back. And this is back in 2005. I can still say that today. And that's how well I believe the funds are managed. And that's exactly why I actually agreed to become a board member, because I believed in the system. Because I too, our family migrated here, and this is my way of giving back after all the years. This island is my home. So I'm sorry if it's taking long. I believe in the health centers. And from what I see, and when I joined, actually, I thought we were a governing board. And that's what I was led to believe, even when I went to the federal trainings and met our federal counterparts. That's what I have always believed. So since the time I have come, I believe 2005 was also the date that we broke ground for... for renovations to the Northern Public Health. So there were renovations and I was proud to be a part of that. But through these years, the, the C H C has grown, has grown. I, I wasn't here, I, I wasn't a part of this in 1984, when it was a program. But from then till now, this is a bigger entity, a bigger, we have more deliverables, we have a bigger community that we need to service. But when I look at this and I, I, because we were told we were an advisory board, you know, the problem is we lost our C H, our C E O. Our board as a governing board does not micromanage what is going on with the C H C. That is why we have to have a C E O. In the absence of the C E O, based on the law, it's public health, the director and their staff that sort of takes over. We lose control and we're looked at as an advisory board. So we are losing control. Our staff has to, now we have a, a certifying officer for C H C. If that person certifies on documents, we still need to bring it to public health so their certifying officer can look at this. It's redundant and should not happen. When I look at this law and it was recently brought to my attention, I read it. And when I read it, it seemed to me that it was actually established or put into law, put in place to sort of allow for the receipt of the federal grant. If you look at the grants requirements, our law, this law, sort of mirrors that. It allows us to now, the creation of the board, the issue, and I don't think it was the problem or the mistake of the senators back then. Because it was a program, it was something small that had to be put under the Department of Public Health during that time, 1984. But we've grown so much since then. And I believe that the current law needs to be changed because we have a C E O and you have a director. You cannot have two bosses running one entity. It has to be, there has to be a separation of power. There has to be some sort of restructure that needs to happen. Because even though this law existed, when I came in in 2005, we worked with many administrations, many directors. We've sat, I've sat in legislation, in this hall lobbying. We lobbied for our sliding fee. We lobbied to separate our account from the general fund and create its own one so that at that time, we thought it would not be touched. But also so that processing, like they mentioned earlier, processing of P O's would be more expedient because we're not dependent on local funding. In D O A, if you're, again, I retired from there. If your funding is from federal funds or if you have the money in, I can't say another account, the funding is readily available, there's no delays in processing. If the funding is from local appropriations, then there has to be funding or reprogramming of funds and sometimes that causes delays. But we didn't want that. That's why we separated the, the program income to expedite the processing of funds. Anyway, going back to, I'm sorry, again, I'm not a public speaker. Going back to the C E O and this law, it may have been acceptable then, but the program has grown. The C H C in and of itself is hard to manage. And this entity combined with the, all the other programs within public health is not working. And we can see that based on the reports. We just had a site visit and I am ashamed to say that we did not do well. When I first came into, in 2005, until we had lost our C E O, with the person that was managing the health centers, we were actually doing well. The health center was growing. We managed to accumulate funds. You see that? We were even touted by the federal government as being the role model for our region, role model for a lot of, for the health centers within our region. That's how well we were doing. But if you remove, the loss of that C E O really hurt. And then again, the fact that we, the board is considered advisory board, again, we lose control. We have no real power to, to say things, to do things, you know? It's now, what, what we have since we lost our C E O is the result of working with public health. And you can't really blame them as much. Like I said, this entity has grown so that, so much that it needs its own governing body, its own managing body. And, and having a, the director that has to manage all the different programs within public health and then try to manage the C H C in itself, that's too much for one person to do. And again, because that loss of C E O, there's a lot of redundancy in, in terms of how the flow of documents work. We've lost opportunities to hire people because documents take so long to process. We can cut that time if the C H C can try to contact or push through. It may not help, but it can help a little. We know that there are problems in the A G's office, documents get held back, contracts, G S A, D O A, there are places where documents are held up. But it shouldn't be held up between C H C and public health. You know, we should cut out that redundancy. And again, when I look at this law, as I have read it, it goes back to trying to fulfill the requirements of the federal government and the vision of the federal government. We're fortunate, I feel fortunate that these people are here and they constantly providing help because healthcare is constantly evolving. And we've seen that in the recent threats, you know, Dengue and of course, the COVID. These things are realities and, and just proves that we need this health center, we need these entities, public health. Instead of, we have the same goal, we have the common goal of helping the people and we should be working with each other. I believe that given the chance, and if we can get a C E O, we can get back to the level of production of recognition that we once had. We were on track. As a matter of fact, before, of this, we did start to talk about becoming an anonymous agency so that we can compete. Because we're competing with the hospital for positions. If you talk about funding, if you talk about things we need, there's always a need. I don't think there's a government agency that will tell you they have enough money or they have enough staff. But the C H C is one of, I believe, the premier or the only program that has grown into what the feds actually aspire to. I mean, we, we were touted very good. So, because a lot of these grants are given to programs to start them off so that they can become self-sufficient in themselves. We were on track. But prematurely, I believe, we lost our local funding because the people were looking at our bank account and saying, hey, you have a lot of money. C H C is not here to make money. If we have funds and we do have funds in our account, they're earmarked for things. When I was growing up, there was a dental program. Actually, my first feelings were at public health. We wanted to bring things like that back. And the growth stopped because funding stopped in terms of local funding. Eventually we were going towards that. I think it prematurely stopped. That's what I believe. I believe that a quick fix and something that will help this C H C go back into what I believe is working order would be fixing this law. It does say that we are an advisory board. I don't believe that's the intent. If this is the case, we actually do not, we don't qualify for this grant. The grant specifically states governing board. And that fact had been pointed out during our last visit. We'd never, I mean, the law has been in existence, but the board had never been challenged. We had a C E O in place. So I think we can say that this board and the members of our C H C are prudent, are, can bring this entity to, what can I say? To a working order, you know? I, I'm sorry. Again, I, I wanted to speak up earlier.
Thank you.
But I can't.
No, Mr. Adrosa, first of all, thank you for your service and don't quit. Do not quit. Keep moving forward. Yeah, it's very frustrating because a lot of the needs that we're talking about today, especially relative to, you know, specifically the residents of the South. I mean, we're talking about the availability of urgent care in the South. And we know that the Southern Regional Community Health Center is completely equipped with a three-bed urgent care center. And so coming from the South, I see that our leaders, people who came before the 37 Guam Legislature foresaw the need of our communities in the South and the North, correctly determined that the need was great and that these community health centers would fill that gap relative to appropriate primary health care, acute outpatient care, urgent care and preventative services. But what we have seen over the years is the degradation and decline of the availability of the accessibility for these services again, which I don't need to remind anybody here that our entire population is underserved. But it is very frustrating to know that, that we thought of this and, and we saw this need and we determined it and we addressed it. But according to all the testimony I've heard this morning, I don't know if I want to say that it sounds like public health is undermining your ability to deliver these critical and crucial services to, again, our, our most in need and those most deserving of them. But it's also difficult for me to not think that when you tell us about the rating of these funds, that you have directors of agencies looking at your bank account and, you know, their, their mouth is watering already because like you said, what agency has enough money?
I wouldn't go as far, I'm sorry, Senator, I wouldn't go as far as...
It's all semantics, sir, right? I mean, like you said, you have funds and you have determined the use of these funds and that you need them, right? And, and it's frustrating. I mean, we have information here that there's, there's one physician providing prenatal care for the entire island population under these community health centers. And that's just egregious when you consider our infant mortality rate. And so again, our, our leaders foresaw this need and the challenges that we were going to face and to find out they're not being met and, you know, not necessarily because we're lacking the funds, but more so because we don't have the support. So I, I see it a little differently. I don't know if we've outgrown the advisory board, but I think the advisory board at its inception was okay because you had an alignment of interest from the executive branch on down that this is where we're moving, that we have to serve the people in the South, we have to serve the people in the North and everybody is on the same page. But once you have a, an administration or an executive branch that departs from that for whatever reason, then like Uncle Ben said, you cannot oka them, you know? There's no teeth, you can't bite down. And so I, I commend again the speaker for, for seeing this. And I just, it's frustrating because, you know, coming from the South and again, we have a lot of underserved people in the North and to know that we have these programs that are supposed to meet all of these needs that we're talking about currently, you know? And, and you guys are sounding like G M H, can't pay the vendors, can't fill the needs, you know? And if you're not going to get the support, if our people are poor and vulnerable are not going to get the support that they need and when we have, you know, agencies and administrations that create roadblocks to the success of these programs, then yeah, I think we, we flip the script and we make you a governing board because that kind of sounds like, like what everyone's saying, Mr. Adrosa. So again, I commend you for your service. I'm glad that it's in your heart and that you know that the goal of these community health centers and we have fallen so far. I mean, like I said, it's just been constant decline. So like, I know that the committee and the body is committed to doing what we can do to address a lot of these things and I feel your frustration, sir, and I, I commend you. Please don't stop speaking up, all right? Please don't stop speaking up because somebody has to stand up for, for those who can't stand up for themselves and, and thank you for doing that, sir. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. Can I ask, what are the expected changes in the cooperative agreement? So HERSA just came recently and you have negotiated a new agreement. You said it's under, been under review by the director. What are the expected changes from before and now, what are the big ones that you for sure negotiated?
Senator, if we make changes to this law and we can sort of reorganize... Reorganize the structure so that the there's a clear distinction between the duties of the CEO and the director. I think we eliminate the need for a co-applicant agreement.
Oh.
Because the CEO would then, there's going to be a separation of power and the CEO will have oversight of the CHC in itself. The way this is written, the CEO is under the director and reports to the director, but is required to report to the board.
Is it a possibility that this community health centers apply? I mean, without a co-applicant agreement, you're saying? Is that possible? The deputy director shaking his head, no.
For the CEO to apply for its own grants. That could be, that could work.
As Mayor Savaris pointed out earlier, Madam Speaker, the CHCs are in
Can't hear you, sorry.
Are in the 5% of the nation that are co-applicant structured. The reason why it's considered that way is because the department is the one that receives the award from HERSA. But community health centers need a governing body to be able to work with the department. So that's the structure that they have. Other community health centers across the nation, a nonprofit or NGO is the one that runs the whole.
That applied and got the grant instead of public health. Okay. Well, I can see how that evolves.
And with regards to the governing bodies' role, we don't have a problem with that. The challenge that we have and it's been a struggle to try to figure out because the CHC employees are Gov Guam employees. They're the department's employees and so they're classified. They fall under the DOA protection, the Rosen regs and stuff. So the struggle that we were having is because even the C in the agreement is acknowledging that the CEO is a Department of Public Health and Social Services employee. And so if you're going to terminate the employee and as Mayor Savaris has said, there's been negotiations on trying to figure out how we could work this out because these are classified employees under that protection. And if they're concerned, they're worried that if somebody can just come and fire me because an at will employ, you know, if you don't like somebody for something, we'll see you later. And we, those classified employees, especially if they're vested in the government, you know, are not going to be too comfortable with that scenario. So we're trying to figure out how we can do that. And the board has actually looked at concessions where they will adopt the Department of Public Health's rules, which happens to be the DOA rule. So there's, you know, as Mayor Savaris has said, we're negotiating, we're trying to figure all of those things out. One of the challenges that we have is that, and I'm not, I don't remember, I wasn't part of the process when the change for the, usually the bureau heads within the Division of Public Health are called health service administrators. So the administrator for the bureau, for the CHC was, that's the position title. When the law came in and changed it to become the CEO, I don't know if that was a creation of a new position or there's just like a name change in the, a title, you know, change. And so we need to, because one of the, I mean, if the board enters into, faces a situation where they're not pleased with the performance of the CEO, it is their right to be able to say, well, you know, based on your performance, we need you to get out of the CHCs, which would be fine, but then how do we, as Mr. Adrosa is saying, we have a director and then we have a CEO. How do we reconcile that within the government service with regard to? It used, if it was a health services administrator, we have other programs that we could probably assign that individual to if that was a decision that was going to be made. But recognizing that the board would have the authority to remove that function from the CHC, we respect that, we understand that. It's trying to figure out the other part of it because if we take them out, we can't put that CEO into another program that is not, I mean, it's a different title.
All right. This is my concern, Deputy Director, is that this discussion has been going on for a long time and it's creating issues, clear, very clear management issues. So when you say we are negotiating, what do you mean? I thought we're done negotiating. Do we have a resolution or we do not?
I think we're on that road to be able to get that solution.
Yeah, how long do you anticipate to continue without a solution?
Well, we're still going through the process for the CHC CEO. But with regards to the co-op.
What do you mean the process? Yeah, what do you mean?
Yeah, so.
You mean the hiring?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
What do you mean, we're still going through the process of the CEO?
As Mayor Savaris said, we're looking at seeing if the other applicants.
Yes. You mean the hiring?
Yes.
Yeah, hiring a CEO. Is that your urgent? Is that getting the Department of Public Health and Social Services immediate attention?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
All right. What about this negotiating of the co-applicant agreement? I've seen a draft, so what is the status and how long is this going to take?
Within the next month. With this one.
Please address the chair.
By the end of this calendar year, ma'am. We'll see if we can get that co-op agreement signed.
All right. Have you discussed with DOA your issue with, you know, chain of command? What can this, is it a CEO position separate and apart? Or is it a CEO position that that has to meet what public health wants a bureau director to be?
It used to be.
I know, those are in the past, but I'm saying we've had these discussions for years now. This has been the issue. So how close are we to the solution? Has DOA given you any options for solution? Have you come up with any options of how to resolve that? Because we can choose if we have options to choose from. Are there any options?
DOA has said that it could be a concern.
It is a concern.
Yes.
Absolutely a concern. We need a resolution. So what is the department doing to resolve that?
We're looking at how we can make that make that part happen with regards to the CEO. Because that is the stumbling block.
Are you, one option is to create a new position, CEO, not the bureau chief or bureau head, but just a CEO of the community health centers that is governed by the board and kind of no role by public health in that. Is that an option?
That could be an option.
And DOA can write that up for us?
I will check with Mr. Burnett.
You and DOA can write that up? All right. So the other option is for Department of Public Health to retain some control over the CEO, the hiring, the firing. Is that an option that you're looking at?
Yes, we've actually, in this last opportunity to hire a CHC CEO, we included Mayor Savaris in the process of the interview.
Yeah. The mayor, though, is not the counsel. This is my concern. That does not match. So while she is included in the process, it's really the counsel. So I would imagine if we're going to say they are the approving entity, they must take a vote, yes or no? They, if they are the approving, I want it very clear whether they are the approving above step, you know?
So Speaker, what happens is, once the selection is done, it is brought to the board meeting and then the board, you know, either says yes or yea or nay.
So the board would have to be satisfied with the selection process. So you have to, as a board, approve this selection process that involves the department, the director, whoever.
And it needs to be in the board minutes because HERSA looks at those minutes.
Yes, of course. All right. Okay, well, is there an issue with the draft co-applicant agreement? Are you not in agreement with it? Are we expecting changes to it? Can you turn on your mic?
We just need to clarify the issue if there's a termination of that particular position.
So I think it's the board's position that they do not want the Department of Public Health involved with personnel at the CHC.
And the board can make the recommendation to remove the CHC CEO. It would start with them.
What about the reverse, not to remove?
They would, they have that.
We heard earlier, and I know this is confirmed because I've discussed it with the department, that the department terminated a CHC CEO after one month. The board was not consulted. So what about that? Is that addressed in this new draft co-applicant agreement?
I don't know the specifics of that particular incident, ma'am.
Who's reviewing the agreement at the department? Because my understanding, it's been sent there, according to the mayor, the chairperson of the CHC and at HERSA's recommendation that they get this new applicant agreement, co-applicant agreement, it's been sent to the director. What's the status?
The status, Madam Chair, is that the termination portion of the co-op agreement just needs to be addressed so that we.
By who? Who's addressing it?
It would have to be at the director's level, our office, to be able to make that final recommendation.
Are you addressing it personally or is the director or is someone else?
I'm working on trying to figure out how that mechanism would work.
All right. So if it's you and your estimate, the earliest is the end of the month, end of December.
Do you need help with the verbiage? I can help you with the verbiage if you want to.
Well, we can also check with, I'm sorry, ma'am. We have, there's a technical consultant we could approach.
Okay. All right. Yeah, and if we need to, we can meet, we can call DOA and we all meet and we resolve it as soon as possible so we move forward. I think, I agree, Mr. Adrosa, that if we do not qualify for the grant, the way our law is written or the way we are actually managing it, then why are we putting ourselves at risk? So I had asked for the report, the inspection report or their visit report. I was not granted that. I guess you're reviewing whether it's legal to show me a copy of the report at this point. And I respect that. But I'm just saying, according to some of the advisory council members, it was not a great conclusion that HERSA came up with on their visit, right? So we have issues to resolve and my goal is just to resolve these as fast as possible because that was seven years ago that we had a CEO. So the praises that Mr. Adrosa is singing for the community health centers. Yeah, of course COVID came in and shot everything apart, but but still, we know we can do it. It's really the message, we can do it. We really need focus. A CEO is going to give us focus, right? We need one that's not going to be impeded. We need one that's going to have every single tool available to him or her to do procurement, hiring, recruitment, retention, supplies, right? All of that. And to do the services, the report shows, I mean, apparently you're supposed to have dental, mental health, substance use disorder, vision, enabling services and all of those are not being provided. Our number of patients we're seeing has dramatically gone down and yet we've got mayors, you know, testifying in other bills that their services are not available in the South, right? And that's exactly what we cannot have. So I, again, the vision is so beautiful and I agree, public health can very much facilitate this. But something, we need to fix these glaring shortfalls. We need to fix them. We can't continue to say, and I'm going to say, I became chair of public health maybe five years ago, legislative chair of public health, same issue, no lawyer, no. The procurement, whenever public health tells me they're having procurement issues, it's too slow. I go to them and GSA tells me, public health didn't write it up correctly, right? So there's a back and forth, not resolved. So when you're saying you're working on these things, you've got somebody who's very knowledgeable, who's dedicating themselves. Well, I don't know because I feel like this should be brought to the cabinet meetings and it should be a very clear decision by the executive branch that we're going to prioritize public health, that we cannot afford to get behind in vendors like we did with GMH. Do you see the disaster we're having there? $30 million behind in vendors because they weren't able to bill. And now I heard that problem this morning for the public health centers too. Not able to bill, vendors' payments are getting behind, even though we have federal funds. That cannot be acceptable. So I'm going to do what I can, but I'm saying this is the director and you as a deputy director, you have, your role to me in this whole scheme is to get the rest of the government to prioritize these community health centers. Because we have to be, that is our most needy, our most vulnerable and that, to me, is going to decide the health of our entire population. If we can take care of those, of those people who should be going to these centers and we can assure them that they can come, they will be taken care of, that we're getting it to be as one stop as possible. If we can assure them of this and thrive in that way, I really believe the rest of our community is going to benefit from that. Everyone else will benefit from that. And we need to get back there like in a month and not wait for years and years. It's taking long. I think our recovery from COVID in the health centers has to become full. You know, I know that all the staff was delegated to do all kinds of different things for COVID and I very much appreciate all that work and that public health had to hustle and, you know, reorganize things. However, now it's like, I'm very worried. We closed down the central health clinic, right? Mangila, we closed it. That means the dental that we did have is gone from the island and all the other services that were taking place there. And we've put this burden on these other centers without really full resourcing them out. In fact, I'm hearing some of the storage from the central facility has been put into the southern facility. All of it, right? So we've got to max it out because, and it's not you or anyone in particular, but as a system, right? We've got to make it thrive, thrive. They have to thrive, I think, in order for our entire community to thrive. Otherwise, we're burdening GMH with urgent care patients that could have been taken care as chronic disease patients or whatever type of patients down in these other community health centers. We've got to grow the confidence of our community in these community health centers by everything we do. So I'm willing to do whatever it needs. So as a technical matter, I'm going to, if it's okay with you, I'm going to end this oversight hearing. I'm going to read the bill, put it on the record and, yeah, and I'm going to just transition into that topic and I want to recognize the presence of Senator Joanne Brown. I think because there are such overlapping topics, the governance and the facility, I would allow Senator Brown to begin with the questions on that bill. If that's okay with you, Senator, we'll proceed. I just want to put that bill on the record because it's not on the record yet. So let me do that. All right, again, so this is bill number 209. It's an act to amend sections 3803, 3813, 3814 of chapter three, title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to updating the program, Advisory Council and Duties of the Council Concerning Community Health Centers. I introduced this bill because it did come to my attention that the advisory council by the HERSA grant and is supposed to be a governing council and our statute says it's was not clear, I guess, and who had the authority to do certain things in its governing role, ensuring the needs of the community health centers are met. The advisory council is supposed to oversee the operations of the centers, the selection of services to be provided, the hours of operation, to authorize the hiring of the CEO, approve the budget, manage their money pretty much and manage. manage their money pretty much and, and manage grant applications and the long-term planning. So the note, I mean, sorry, the bill, it literally changes some of these words in the current statute that say these community health center programs are to be administered on a collateral duty basis by the health services administrator of the bureau within Department of Public Health, who shall serve as the community health center CEO. I'm changing that to remove the health administrator of the bureau. So it's going to read now that the community health center programs to be administered on a collateral duty basis by the community health center chief executive officer of the program. That's the administration of the community health centers. That and their powers and duties of a CEO are really huge. Yeah, they, they pretty much have all power to. They do the needs assessment, they implement primary healthcare services, they staffing, hospital privileges or practice privileges, the fees, the discounts. They're going to manage the staff. It's very clear in the rest of the law that they have ultimate authority in that regard. The second provision in the bill that I'm changing is just changing where, I didn't change the title of the council and we could do that if you have a recommendation. However, in the meat of the statute where it says this council on community health centers is to serve as an advisory capacity, I changed it to a governing capacity. And I believe that this will make the law consistent with the grant and it's going to and that same change is made in other sections of the code. The duties of the council are no longer to review and make recommendation, but to review and approve the bureau's budget, to review and approve the bureau's three-year plan and oversee the operations of the centers. The dismissal and performance evaluation of the CEO is very squarely put in front of the council by this bill. So if it's passed, measuring and evaluating the organization's progress in the meeting and the general policies for the health center. So we will know, and this is, I think the intent was community governed, community. It's going to meet the community's needs because we are community governed. All right, so on that bill, did you have any other testimony you'd like to add? Mayor Savares, who's also the chairperson of this advisory council.
Good afternoon, Senator, Madam Chair. As you know, we're continuing the, the hearing. I'm in support of the, I'm Melissa Savares, chair of the Guam Community Health Center Board. And I do agree with the changes, all from advisory council to the governing board and all the items that you listed earlier. Thank you.
Situs Massey, Mr. Adrosa, also a member of the current advisory council on community health centers.
I do agree with the changes that you have presented. And I would just like to add, hopefully we can include clarification, again, on the duties of the director and the CEO so that it doesn't clash. Again, you cannot run an entity with two bosses, two heads, and it's bound to collide at one point. And if the law would include or clarify the duties, that would further avoid issues down the road, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And on public health, your testimony on the bill, in particular, the language that's being proposed. Deputy Director Camacho of the Department of Public Health and Social Services.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In reviewing the bill, the changes that were recommended, I, I support. Changing from advisory to governing throughout the, the law itself is, is appropriate. I had a question, ma'am, with regards to the 10GCA. And I'm trying to understand, on a collateral duty basis, what does that mean? Because if you're the head of this bureau, which is the Bureau of Primary Care Services, that's all you're going to do. So I'm trying to reconcile that collateral duty line.
Yes.
I, I mean, I'm happy to be educated.
No, 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 I think you're, you're pointing out what I'm also thinking as I read it aloud. It's that I should have struck those words because we had a collateral duty of the administrator of the bureau. Also, her collateral duty is to oversee the health centers or to be the CEO. But now no longer, if we're going to separate. So it's, it's not a collateral duty of the CEO, it's the duty of the CEO. So
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. That's a well-taken recommendation.
Thank you.
To remove that on a collateral duty basis.
And then, again, I'll, I'll just reference the 10GCA because I was trying to do that.
Please, yes, sure.
In section 308 of, of the article eight that refers to the community health centers program, there is a reference to the salary and we kind of talked about it earlier. And so if we would need to make sure that if we're going to stay with the CEO title, which is fine, we need to ensure that the CEO title is part of the classified service or shall it become part of the unclassified at will?
All right, so it needs its own job description, salary, and whether classified or unclassified. What is your recommendation?
If there's an eventual move for autonomy, then this would be quite appropriate with regards to, you know, the, looking at the other standards. But how often is that going to be reviewed? How often is that going to be updated? I mean, we, we have issues with our own pay scales now where, you know, we don't always follow the required timeframes. So that was just an observation.
Do you think it should be classified or unclass?
I think, I think the classified service would be fine, but again, it's, it's the adjustments that the board would then be recommending. I mean, we just need to make sure that that consideration is put in so that the board is not going to be hamstrung by, well, you can't do it because.
All right. What is the section that you were referring to again?
I'm sorry, ma'am, that was section 3804 entitled Personnel.
All right, thank you.
And then right below it is the, it references the chief financial officer and we were told that that's a restricted title to the Department of Administration. And so.
So you think we should amend that language in this bill?
Senator, if I may make a comment. It's was once a goal of the CHC to become an autonomous agency eventually. And like I said earlier, we were moving towards that. But changes in terms of funding, which we, I believe was prematurely removed into our local funding, sort of sets us back in terms of the goal. And the current situation of how the CHC is being run without the CEO, I think has fallen from where we were prior to when we did have a CEO. I think that statement can be backed up with previous audits, annual audits, and previous site visits that the CHC had when we had a CEO in place. I believe if you review that, you will see a big difference in the change. So to move now, moving forward as a semi-autonomous or autonomous agency, it's not actually feasible at this moment. What we are asking so that we can get back in line is that we remain a, a line agency. And still, DOA provides our human resources, accounting and payroll. What we are requesting and what we believe can make significant changes is the separation of duties and the reorganization of, of, of the structure so that the CHC in itself can function more freely as opposed to funneling all its required duties through public health. Again, if you examine what's going on operationally, there is a lot of redundancy and unnecessary redundancy, especially since at this point, we are not even receiving any local funding. Everything that we are doing at the moment is based on federal funds and program income, which we are currently operating on. Again, the movement towards autonomy or semi-autonomy, that can be set in the future. With regard to the CFO, DOA has done an outstanding job in terms of tracking our financials. And again, you can look at previous audits and this is a matter of record. So there's, there is no need to change then. Or make changes to that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Director, Deputy Director Camacho. Any others?
Yes, ma'am. Continuing on under, if I may, I, to Mr. Adrosa's point, I'm trying to understand not changing the CFO. But the, and all I was talking about was the fact that it's a restricted title to DOA. I mean, we can call it goose catcher if we want. As long as it meets the requirements of HERSA for the financial portion of, of this, the law.
Okay, well taken.
And then on, still on section 3804, section D. My question was just, oh, just to make sure that the advisory council is changed again. Sometimes it's hard to make sure we catch everything, ma'am. And I was wondering, article three rulemaking procedures of chapter nine, title five Guam Code annotated. Is this restricted to government agencies?
Where are you referring? Where is that?
Section, section 3804. Section or subsection D, amendment of position description. That's the title of that particular section.
All right. And what is your question? Whether the citation there is correct?
Is this restricted or this function here restricted to government agencies or with the board? Because we're saying the board now and the board is, is an NGO. I just wanted to make sure that if the board is, it's granted that, that they're going to be able to do that per governments.
I see. Yeah, I think the citation is referring to the AAA process. And they're saying we're going to establish position descriptions in that process. But I think that's not how we establish position descriptions anymore, right? We have a process to go through. So maybe I will, I will look at that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Under section 3805, item F, just to make sure that we change advisory council to board of directors or Guam, Guam CIC board of directors.
Yeah, I did not change the title in the law all throughout. And I, I guess I'm waiting for a recommendation from you as to what you, you should be called if not advisory council. I was leaving it as that, but if there's another title, I can change it throughout the law.
It would be governing board.
Okay, we'll do.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, and there was a, where it says advisory councils, one for the north or one for the south. Is that, is that needed? Because there's a governing body. If we have another layer, an advisory council, does that complicate further? Because I, I believe the board is working really well and trying to address all of the needs collectively for the bureau.
We come from all places, all parts of the island, from the north to the south and all ethnic backgrounds.
Mayor, is there a requirement in, in the HERSA grant that there be an advisory council for the north or an advisory council?
No, it's just one.
There's a requirement for a governing board, not an advisory. Okay, thank you.
And then on section 3808, the last paragraph of that section, ma'am. The overall management, budgeting, cash and property accounting shall be exercised by the director of the Department of Public Health and Social Service to whom the bureau head reports to, namely the chief public health officer. It just the bureau head reports to the CPO. So it just needs to be.
There, that's, that's it. I did not see this. So thank you. I think that's a critical provision to be reviewed. All right. Thank you very much. It's 3808, last paragraph.
Yes, ma'am. On section 3810, there's a requirement that shall be certified by either joint commission or HICFA. Is that CMS? I'm referencing CMS.
What, what is the?
Section D.
Okay, what do you, what, what should it be?
It says the facility shall be certifiable by either the joint commission accreditation of healthcare organizations or healthcare financing administration. I think that would be CMS, Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services.
All right, I will verify.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And then just changing the, the last word of that, our section E to governing body.
E, all right, got it.
And then the, under section 3811, under the revolving fund. Under the, it says maintained by the administrator community health centers. Just change it to the chief executive officer, CEO. To be maintained by the administrator community health center. So just to make sure we're
Okay.
same throughout. On section three, again, on 3811, item number one.
A1.
Yes, ma'am. Just make sure we change the title to correctly. And then a number, item two, board of directors instead of advisory council.
Okay.
Right? And on section E, accounts receivable, community health center CEO. I apologize, ma'am. I thought this might be the better way for me to go through the law. So we wouldn't have to come back. And I believe that might be it. Oh, no, sorry. Section 3813 is again, just making sure we change the title to.
All right.
Right?
I will review the entire chapter and check the title of the governing board and we'll check the.
And then the duties of. And then the duties of the, not Council, but duties of the.
Administrator, yeah.
Yeah, Governing Body.
Administrator to CEO.
Yeah. I think that's it.
All right.
I'll go back again, but.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Deputy Director, Bureau Chief. I'm not sure all your titles. You're the Head of Public Health.
Acting.
How do you call it?
Just acting, ma'am. And by default, my understanding, I'm also the acting CEO until they fill that position full-time. But yes, no, I'm, I'm in support of, of the proposal, of the proposed amendment you have put forth, ma'am. And yet I only had the same questions in regard, removing collateral from that first section that already the deputy mentioned.
All right, what is your recommendation as to whether the CEO should be a classified or unclassified position of the government of Guam?
For, for protection purposes, as a longtime serving public service servant, I would say classified because that gives them security, but I know it's been a challenge to fill at such a low pay scale. Because yes, even though I am also an administrator in my real job, the CHC is, is a monster in itself. It's a very big bureau compared to my bureau. And so the pay should be commensurate with that extra duties, so. But for, for individuals who have worked their way up through the ranks and served within public health, I know the classification status because of the security is, is another way of keeping us within government service because we all know we're not here for the money, but definitely for job security. So that, I'm a little torn, but I would, I would tend to lean towards classified, classified, ma'am.
Thank you, and I want to thank you. I think you're a great example of that. During COVID, you were asked to do very many difficult things, controversial sometimes, and you had to defend that to the public. So I just want to thank you, and I guess I'm glad you were a classified employee at the time, and it made your words trustworthy to the public. And that's what we want, the public to believe us as a government as fast as possible and build that. Well, thank you. All right, Governor, I mean, sorry, Senator Brown. On, yeah, any questions for this panel?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I know you've had this hearing since 8:30 this morning. I have to tell you, this is another one of those moments where the malaise of government, you know, I don't even know what to say because the focus of the mission to me gets lost when we get caught up in these kind of details. And that's bothersome to me because what I have observed, and I certainly appreciate Mayor Savaras when we had that gathering a few weeks ago with the doctors of you speaking up with regards to, and I appreciate the role you're taking on top of what you already have, which is quite substantial. You know, being the mayor of one of the largest villages on Guam, and yet still dedicating your time to assist public health, and the need is there. What is bothersome to me is the fact that as time has gone on, as we mentioned at that gathering, the loss of capacity with public health. You know, public health, when I was growing up on Guam, had such a presence. And as students in the public school, we would go there to get our regular checkups, our dental, even dental work, you know, our shots, just the basic healthcare needs that you want every child to have to ensure safe and healthy, you know, that they're, they're growing up healthy and growing up well. And as time has gone on, only to find out that we, especially for the Southern District Public Health, that the capacity there has been so significantly reduced. And then we had, as Senator Barnett had mentioned, there was a doctor there that mentioned, yes, she is contracted with public health, but she only provides service once, one day a month. And, and granted, what can you do in one day a month? You cannot provide the kind of follow-up care that patients need. I bet there might be patients, pregnant women that are coming in that probably have not had regular checkups during their pregnancy and probably need additional care because of that. And to find out that that's limited to that degree where there's such a need is bothersome. And yet the public budget for public health every year continues to grow. And I don't know if we're putting so much on our plate that we're not focusing on the most critical things that we need to do to provide that outreach because that was the desire, was that public health would be out there in the community, particularly assisting those that otherwise may have no other course of healthcare. And I don't know that we're on that track. I, I think we're going in the opposite direction. I think we're getting too caught up. And what's frustrating for me for government, and now this is like my 34th or 35th year in Gov Guam, but I've never been classified. I've never desired to be classified. And being unclassified, yes, you might, you could be removed at any point. But I'll tell you one thing, at least for me, it, it requires performance. I've never taken it for granted that, oh, I got a job, I'm here for 30 years till I retire, I'm just, you know, biding my time. It's required me to perform, and I've, I've certainly, you know, I'm pleased that I've, I've survived the system. Hopefully, I have performed well enough that I've been able to keep in. But I am bothered by the process of government to the extent that our focus is on security of the employee, the individual employee becomes more the focus than the mission. And when we lose sight of the mission, all we're doing is existing, and we're not functioning, and we're not producing the outreach and support to the community, especially to those who most desperately need the service. Now, when we have a grant that's sitting because we can't get these issues addressed, and you know, I empathize with the speaker of saying she's been going through this for the last five years. You know, our inability to cut through this stuff, which is not rocket science. It is not rocket science. It just means we've not focused on it and prioritized it so that we can address these issues in expedite because we are looking to ensuring outcomes. And I, I see government, it's getting too into itself that it's not performing the needs of the community. I'm hopeful that, you know, this legislation that's being put forth will address these issues. But you know, at some point, we have to run out of the excuses as to why we are not performing. And I think we need to really focus on what we need to do to get back to the basics so that public health goes back to what its original mission was. We've created more positions and more titles and more assistance to the assistant to the assistant, and yet the productivity and outcome to the public is not there. And that makes no sense to me. Back in the day when we had far less personnel, far less budget, and yet we were performing. And, and I myself, like I said, having been a young child growing up here, I, I was a recipient, as many others of my generation, of public health services. Going to Mingilo was a, we'd get in a bus, they would take us on a bus, and it was like a little field trip to go up there for our checkups as public school students. And I don't know that that even happens at all anymore. And why is that? If I can ask that question, and what are we doing to address it? Because I'll tell you, it, it's very frustrating, and I've been on both sides of the aisle. I, I mean, I, I know what it is to be the hands and the, you know, the legs and the, of government to operate. And yet on this side of the aisle, we're policymakers, all we can do is do policy, but we can't go in and run your agencies. And it's frustrating because, you know, yes, I can do your job. And to not see it happening is, is just very frustrating for us. So if I can ask, maybe Peter John, if you can let us know, what is public health doing? Because this is embarrassing to me, honestly. It was very embarrassing to hear where we're at, especially with a southern clinic, and especially when you have residents coming here, relaying their concern. And, and we have elderly, we have others that don't have the convenience. Maybe we get in our car, we think nothing of it. But there are others that don't have, you know, access to transportation, may not be able to travel all the way up here. We take that for granted. But you know, public health used to be the outreach of Guam, and it's just not happening. And I really honestly want to know, what are you guys doing to get on the ball and get back out there and get that, that basic service out to the people?
I know that one of the goals with the Community Health Centers is, because not everybody has access to, to transportation, is to do more outreaches so that we can get more services out to the community where they can access it as well. We need to look at how we can expand that. We need to look at, you mentioned the dental program. That's something that I remember seeing, and it's been lost. I think for public health, it was just through attrition, the staff who were, the support staff started to retire, and so they were never able to replace them. And then our dentists would also retire, go to private practice. So that's something that I think we need to look at and see how, if that can be addressed. We need to look at whether or not there's capacity in our Community Health Center to be able to restore that. And the centers would probably know that better because I don't know if they still have the space, Madam Chair, Mayor? For. Okay.
Right now, the, the facilities, as like the speaker mentioned earlier, the stuff from the Central Public Health, a lot of boxes are still in the Southern Health Center. For our site visit, we had to clear the hallways so that we could make sure we get our visitors through the facility. But it's about also getting the boxes from Central Public Health building. They're all stored in our training room right now. And we, we can make space. There's definitely space in the south, you know, so that, that can be done.
I know you're the deputy there, but this is where leadership really is falling short. That's the mission of the directors. That's why you guys are at the head of, at the helm of the agency is to determine where those deficiencies are, what you need and what you have to do. We shouldn't be sitting here telling you that, what you need to do. If you're losing your, you know, we're sitting here waiting, people retire, oh, we didn't fill the position. What were you doing to address it? That's the question. I mean, I know you've been in this position a short time in this administration, but nevertheless, really? I mean, honestly, I'm sorry, yes, I can speak because I've been there. We should have an expectation of performance, and I'm telling you, and message to the administration, ring a dingaling the bell here, it's Christmas. All these key areas from education to public safety, to public health, to the hospital, all these key areas where we should see better performance, we were promised better performance, we're not seeing it. And we're seeing leadership come here, and we're literally wanting to jump over here and say, hey, guys, wake up, you know, the coffee's boiling, get on the ball, and operate your agents properly and ensure that your main mission is to ensure service to the public. We are getting too much into ourselves within government that we're sitting in our positions and we are not delivering. And to simply exist in a department or agency and pick up a check every two weeks and not perform, to me is just mind-boggling. I would be bored out of my mind. And yet we're not delivering the service, and yet our community out there is no better? And can we say we're healthier? What are the odds? I don't need a statistic and a survey to tell me. The odds are probably fairly good that we're sicker as a community, that we're not well. And the critical services that you can deliver, particularly to those that may not have any other form of healthcare or access because of finances, it's another Lasodzu we're going to be going to, honestly. I, my patients, I don't know what to do. Maybe I just need to go on and focus on something else more progressive and fun. Because I'll tell you, I am not, and, and having done this for a number of years, I am not seeing better. And for the administration, they are behind the ball. Because I'll tell you, you guys should be up here telling us, you should be hitting your marks and telling us what you're doing and what you're improving on and what you're doing to get better outreach to the community. But to end up hearing where we are with a southern clinic, especially those for our southern residents that you know are always almost left behind, that's not been prioritized. We're talking about moving boxes so we can access a facility. I mean, who's in charge of the Southern Healthcare Clinic? I mean, these things to me are management-related, and my goodness, I bet we're much more management-heavy in public health than we were back in the 1970s. And the night, what, 19, what are the odds? Let's look at the staffing pattern. But I'll tell you, back then, government performed, even in a limited service, but it performed. And right now, I don't see it. I see us pouring more money in, and I don't see the outcome. I don't have any other questions. I don't even know what to say anymore because I just, I'm mayor, I give you credit. I mean, you don't have to do what you're doing. You got enough on your plate just taking care of your village. But I'll tell you, Peter John, this is not, this is disturbing to see that we are not hitting our marks and we're not prioritizing what we need to do to, to get that service out there and have that interface with the community so that young people growing up know that they have somewhere to go, and families know they have somewhere to go. You guys got to kick it up because I don't see it. I just see us existing, and existing ain't enough if the services are not being provided. So Madam Speaker, I hope we can expedite this bill of yours. I hope it will address these longstanding issues. But, you know, we're frustrated, guys, we need to see some deliverables, and, and time is running out. I mean, if this is going to be the legacy of this administration that ran on one of the key issues with healthcare, that was one of the top, you know, our, our governor's a nurse, and I've served with her for many years, right here. And yet we are here walking through, you know, Intro 101 class on how do we do our jobs? And, you know, we're still trying to figure it out years later. I, I just, I don't even know what to say. But we are not hitting our marks with regards to improving healthcare on Guam. And to hear from the doctors themselves, and again, I understand the dynamics and, and the agendas and the politics of it all, but when they're saying we're not better, that things are worse, I don't know what we gain with that. None of us gain. I don't care what political side of the aisle you're on. If that's where we're at as a community and we're not healthy as a community, there's no gain. And who cares about the politics if our health is not where it needs to be? So with that, Madam Speaker, I have no further comment. And in spite of all that, I hope everyone has a safe and Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown. Oh, and let me ask Senator Barnett if he has any comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to wish you guys a Merry Christmas too. And of course, echo the comments of Senator Brown. It's very, very frustrating that we thought of all these things and how we're going to address these needs in our community. And also just judging from the body language between the mayor and the deputy director, I do feel that there's a lot of tension. And unfortunately, I don't, I don't blame Mr. Adrosa and the mayor because, right, they, they obviously understand the responsibility they have to deliver these services to these severely underserved communities, right? And, and, I mean, we have closed down a whole, this whole Central Health Clinic, and we're now using the Southern Health Clinic for storage. And meanwhile, we've had a parade of my fellow Southerners come in here to this public hearing room and talk about they don't have the services, they don't have the urgent care. They feel forgotten. So I, I guess, Mayor, do you want public health to have any responsibility relative to hiring and firing of, of the CEO?
I just want to correct something. I did say boxes are stored, but it's not stored in the clinic area. It's stored upstairs on the second floor where our training room was at and the business office, not in the clinic. The clinic area is on the first floor, okay?
So what is the?
I don't want you to think that we're taking clinic space and storing boxes from Central Public Health.
So what is that normally used for on the second floor?
We have training, that's a training facility, a training room, and then our business office. The front part of the second floor is used by the Public Welfare, WIC, and Food Stamp and Welfare.
Thank you, Mayor. So do you want public health?
We do provide, we are still providing primary healthcare services, as I mentioned earlier, to our underserved. Thank you.
Thank you. So Mayor, do you, do you want public health to have any type of involvement in the hiring and firing of, of your CEO?
You know, one thing is because we still don't have our co-applicant agreement, we are still working, our, our board members are working on the research for our autonomy, semi-autonomy. Once we get that done, you know, hopefully we can see a light at the end of the tunnel where we actually sever our, our ties, and we don't have to have this co-applicant agreement so that when our CEO applies for a grant, they don't have to wait for the Director of Department of Public Health to sign off on it.
And then you guys.
They want to move on to provide services.
Right. And you're also tangled up with all the procurement issues of, of public health. I know they've had their share of procurement issues. How about you, Mr. Adrosa?
I would just like to add, sir, in the law, if possible, that the CEO of the GCHC has the authority to apply for grants itself. Because if public health, as a director, applies for a grant, then we will need to funnel operations through the public health. If the CHC in and of itself can apply for the grant, then we would be responsible and have more freedom. Also, I believe, again, if you look back at audits, that the GCHC has displayed the. has displayed the prudence in terms of managing funding and how the organization is being kept and operated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adrosa. And thank you, Mayor.
And also, just to remind you that we do not get any funding from the government, from your government allotment that you give to public health. It's strictly grants and programming. Thank you.
Right. And I just think, based on everything I heard today, I mean, the eventual and ultimate goal, I feel, should be complete autonomy for the council, right? And I think that's the only way we're going to see these. I mean, we've tried this, been there, done that. It's not working, failing our people. And so, yeah, that's something I definitely want to support. But thank you again, and Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas, Deputy Director. Merry Christmas. And always good to see you. And I'll see you guys next year, probably. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Yes, Director, and Chief.
If I'm not mistaken, the community health centers are the ones that do complete the application for the HERSA grant.
Right.
And the board approves the grant. So it's just the public health...
The award.
...is the agency that receives the award.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to respond to some of the valid points that Senator Brown had mentioned, and I agree. I availed of those services as a child. It was a field trip for us in the, in the public school system. And being a public health employee, again, throughout my whole career, I have seen the challenges and the struggles, but I need to defend my division of public health staff in that we do the best that we can with what we have. They have made great strides at the CHC post-site visit from HERSA, in that, yes, they have had two outreach events, back-to-back, one in November and December. And in one month, the CHCs have seen over 1,000 patients. So as we recover from COVID, and we're still recovering, our department has not had a break. We've had to deal with Typhoon Wawa when we just ended responding to COVID. But we still deal with COVID up to this day, even though there's no national or global emergency. So the team has pulled together, they are making the necessary corrective actions based on that HERSA site visit. Dr. Bob himself has pulled the clinical team together. So there is that sense of to correct the ship, to make the necessary arrangements internally and across the division. Our respective bureaus help each other, as we do not have a home, and that is what I would implore the legislative bodies, to give us back our home at Mingila, so that we can resume those critical services. Mingila was the only public health facility that offered dental until, unfortunately, the fire. It was convenient for our clients, not for the employees, but for our clients to walk down the hall for multiple services in one building. We are currently spread out over five facilities in multiple villages on this island that our clients have to bounce between. So I would ask that our leadership across this island give us back our home in Mingila, so that we can release some of the burden at the CHCs, free up the space that they need to extend and expand their services. Dr. Bob and the clinical staff have been actively recruiting nurses, nurse practitioners, midwives, and physicians of different specialties to come to the CHCs and to help. Our Bureau of Family Health and Nursing Services have stepped up to be trained for florid varnishing, have worked to have a volunteer dentist come and help, so that we can go out to the community, since we do not have our central home, and to provide these services to the underserved. So we have a volunteer dentist that they have onboarded to help our nurses now do varnishing, as we work to recruit a dental section, but with what home? So if we have a home for our dental program, then we have, we would put in the funding and the requests for dental specialists and dental assistants, dental hygienists, so that we can resume those services at Mingila. And so, again, we work with what we have, with the board, across our bureaus, within the division. We go to outreach events, because we do not have a large enough facility at Northern. They have been housing our TB program and our Bureau of Family Health and Nursing Services. So we have become creative in joining other community partners or having our own outreach events, be it at a shopping center, at the village gym, or a mayor's office, so that, yes, we can try and build back those services that we were used to when we were younger, and we know that is critical for our community. So I just wanted to provide that information. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you very much for all the work, and I know we see it. And so, Sisus Masi, for all the improvements, too, that have been made. Dr. Bob?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that we are trying to increase our services. Can we improve? Yes. Can we do things that we can do much better? Yes. But in light of all of the shortfalls, we are providing a lot of care down, including in the south. So I kind of feel a little bit perturbed when they say that we're shortfalling with people in the south. We do need more people, yes. We are, in the past, in the past month, we've increased our services to clients down in the south. We do provide, I think, excellent care for pediatrics. We have a lot of pediatricians down there that see both well, preventive, and sick. We don't have a urgent care per se, but we do have sick clinics where we can isolate, where we can do treatments, and then if necessary, then send them up to the hospitals. We are definitely improving. We are seeing much more patients down in the south. We'd like to see a lot more, and moving providers from north and south, I think accomplishes that. Yes, we have shortfalls in getting supplies that prevents us to open up the pharmacy for all five days, but we made concessions to that by allowing patients, if they do need medications, that they can come to the south. We can have a runner get the prescriptions up and deliver by the next day. So we are doing things to combat some of the shortfalls. And I, you know, I do think we do provide excellent care. We're still having some problems, obviously, with OB, but that's not just public health. It's the whole island, and it's actually the whole nation that's having issues with OB. So we're not the only clinic with that problem. So I just wanted, as I said, that the services, the nurses down there, they're very, very good and very caring, and they provide a lot of care. I think our, one of our biggest problems is that we don't have a way of announcing what we have down there. Some people are somewhat surprised when they come to the clinic and say, yeah, I didn't even know we had this down here. So I think the other thing we should be, probably do besides hire more people is become more marketable. I don't know if that's the right word, but to spread out the word that we do provide some of these services that people don't think we have down there. Thank you.
I appreciate that. And I know public health has a PIO, particular position. Maybe they can help. But I agree, because when I went there myself, I was so impressed how beautiful it is. It's a beautiful facility. It seems very well-planned. I'm sure that was years ago, but still very well-planned. And as Mr. Adrosa said, I think it was Linda Ampinko...
And it was built with multiple funding sources.
Yes.
We had HERSA, we had Department of Interior, we had GURA, CDBG. So she was very creative, and would say, she tested it in the north, that's how we expanded. And then she did that large expansion, building up for the second floor with all those multiple funding sources.
Great. All right. And Senator Barnett, you wanted to ask a question?
I just wanted to ask, I don't know if you have any information on this, but you mentioned the difficulty in bringing OB guidance to Guam, but then I had read somewhere that there was a nonprofit that's bringing in OB guidance for some type of outreach. So can you explain the differences between what they are able to do versus what you guys are able to do?
I'm not too sure. I think you're talking about Total Guam. That's the only nonprofit that provides human health, I mean, women's care. But I don't know if they have a new obstetrician. But what they're doing, what we're doing in association with them is that to help combat some of the problems we have with women's care, there's a, I think in January, a team from Hawaii coming out to help train the physicians, the nurses, the wives, to do co-poscopies. And hopefully, they're going to be bringing in equipment that they may forget to take back home with them. But yeah, we're, we're so, we're trying to train the people that we do have to be able to do more stuff for the, for women's health. In regards to them bringing in OB, I'm not too sure. I haven't heard anything of that, so I can't really respond to that.
I think it's just relative to what you just discussed. So I guess my question, I don't know if you have an answer, is why are we in this situation where we are now expecting or relying on a nonprofit to do the heavy lifting that maybe some would argue your department should be doing instead?
I, my understanding was that this was a joint effort, not just, it wasn't being just a nonprofit, but a joint effort by Department of Public Health and Total Guam to bring in a team from Hawaii to come and help with the training. So I thought it was a joint effort.
Thank you, Doc.
Thank you, Doc. And Annette, I agree with you, by the way. So I'm not sure if you're aware that I did put in a bill, Bill Number 222, to reserve that Mingila facility for public health. And I have been, as long as this situation has occurred, in consultation with your director, begging him to take control of that facility, and let's fix it up, and tell us whatever you need, because of the services that were cut when we cut the building, when they closed that building. So my most recent status update, there might be even a more recent one, but I, the last one I received was from DPW, that they were putting out another RFP to inspect the building to determine, again, whether it was feasible to renovate it versus, you know, we have to tear it down and rebuild. However, yeah, there is a, it was a big thing. So I appreciate your... Does anyone here advocate that we close the southern or northern clinic and consolidate into one? All right.
Absolutely not.
Everybody's shaking their head. Thank you. All right. So Mayor, we're going to conclude the hearing. If there's anything else you'd like to say as the chair, or Mr. Adrosa, I'll give you that opportunity.
You know, I just want to say that as a chair of the Community Health Center Board, that our health center is focused on providing primary healthcare and health care to our underserved communities. But we also take all insurances and even self-pay. And for those that don't qualify for health insurance or can't afford, we have a sliding fee. And we have great providers. They may not be full-time, but we even have internists that come in, have private practice, and they come in and share a couple of hours of their time. Some of them are contracted, many of them are contracted, but they work in both the southern and northern health center. As we mentioned earlier, our pharmacy is now up, it's stocked, it's not a full supply, but we are pending the hiring of the second pharmacist that will be stationed down there at the southern health center. The lab will be opening soon once the supplies and the staff come. So there are many services that are provided, and we also do outreaches. If you have an event, we go to fiestas, we go to festivals. So if you have an event that you want immunizations done at as well, we work with partners. We've gone to DOE, open house nights, PTAs, PTO conference meetings, and just, you know, let them know what we have at the health centers. And we have many partners. We partner with TB, our maternal health, so, you know, and other agencies. We partner with Total Guam as well. So, you know, we're not here by ourselves, but we working with different partners, you know, and we're here for the community. That's why I'm here. There are three of us mayors that serve on the board, and it's Mayor Tony from Inalahan, myself, because Daredo Health Center, and then we have Mayor Allen, who's our central mayor. But we always advocate, and, you know, like I said, we're going to probably take your advice and work, use the PIO that we have, the Department of Public Health, to help us with our marketing for the health centers. But that's what we're here for, is to serve the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, Sisus Masi, for you, as a council member's work that is voluntary, and for your leadership, your direction, for bringing these issues to light, making sure that they get addressed, for meeting with the federal grantors, and making sure that we are aligned, and of course, to public health, for all of your continued work. And Doc, for all of you who are working, literally, daily, in these community health centers, Sisus Masi, for taking care of our community, to all of you. We try to do this together, and we'll do our part. Sisus Masi, and we'll...
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. And we'll conclude this hearing on Bill Number 209-37. Testimony will be accepted for the next five working days. Can be sent by email to senators@guam@gmail.com or hand-delivered here to the Guam Congress Building or to my office. The time is now 11:40. Sisus Masi.